How will the votes are formed? But if we use the mic there, that might help to amplify the voices of folks at the table. We've heard that that is the most hard thing for people to hear, harder maybe than the votes were coming to vote. Very good.
Okay, well, allow me then, ladies and gentlemen, to rise for a moment. Just I've got the microphone open. I want to introduce myself. My name is Ross Chanpetty. I have the privilege and penance to serve as the zoning board of appeals chair this evening. With me this evening are members of the board whom I'll introduce in a moment, as well as our experts. I know that we have sort of a split room, so forgive the indulgence of my rising and standing, just so that it's clear that everyone can hear me. We are, this is a special hearing which is being recorded. It is the zoning board of appeals hearing of November 12th, of course, 2025. Our beginning time is 7:00 PM, which it is, so we will begin our work this evening. We have one matter that is before the board, which is merely a continuance. We will take that matter on first, and then we will get right into the matter that I'm sure many are here for, which is the 45-story avenue of the project, otherwise known as the 40B Kmart project. I'm going to get right into that without further ado. So what I will do is I'm going to introduce members of the board. I'm then going to establish that we have a legal quorum. We're required to establish that we have a legal quorum so that we can conduct the business of the board this evening. I will then designate for the record which five members can vote on this evening on behalf of the zoning board with respect to the applications that are before us. And then we'll get right into the business of this evening without much ado. I will say that there's a little bit of twist that has been disclosed, and it was with very gratefully received feedback from members of the public, which is essentially ourselves just in, you know, in a different share, as every member of the ZBA are also just volunteer appointees that serve in this capacity. We are, however, at our core and at our marrow simply under residence, just like each and every one of you and each and every one of us. So we have decided to do a public comment, both at the beginning as well as at the end of the material that we'll be undertaking this evening. So anyone that is carrying perhaps something they wish to say or share, I will invite you at the outset of our 40B reconvening to go into a public hearing, I'm sorry, to go into a public comment section. So we will invite you to share your thoughts and your comments. I'll explain what that is in a moment. But to begin with, I will start by taking the role. We will establish our voting members. We will then establish that we can conduct the business of this evening, and we'll get right into the business of this evening. So with that, we have to my immediate left, Mr. Ken Swanton, our vice chair. To his left, Mr. Stephen Delisle, secretary. To his left, Mr. Andy Port, our planning director. To his left, Mr. Gregory Bennet, a member of the zoning board. Mr. Larry Ginter, a member of the zoning board, actually an associate member. Mr. Jared Igerman, associate member. And before I continue to my right, let me just point out that members of the ZBA, whether they are members or associate members, all participate in the hearing with respect to deliberations, questions, and every other matter, though only the voting members that will be designated, the five voting members, actually vote on any matter. To my immediate right is Mr. Gareth Orsman from Pierce Atwood. Attorney Orsman is our legal counsel and our city solicitor, who is here this evening and every evening with respect to advising and counseling the zoning board of appeals with respect to the very technical and legal matters that beset us regarding our work in moving through this 40B project, and has been part and parcel to every part of our work from its outset. To his immediate right is Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner. And of course, probably one of the most important people in the room is Ms. Gretchen Joy, who is, has the unenviable task of copying down and typing every single thing that we all say this evening as our keeper of the minutes. So with that, I'll call the role, we'll establish our business this evening, and we'll get right to it. So thank you for your indulgence, and of course, I will do my best to turn and try to make sure that you all, even those to my immediate right, as well as those to my immediate left, are able to hear me. So with that, calling the role of the Newbury Board Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Delisle.
Here.
Mr. Bennet.
Present.
Mr. Ginter.
Present.
Mr. Igerman.
Here.
And I'm also present. That is one, two, three, four, five, six members that are present. Our voting members this evening will be myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennet, and Mr. Igerman. Mr. Ginter has recused himself and will be not voting, but will be here for all other matters except for the 40B project. And so with that, I've established that we have a quorum. We have our five established voting members. What we'll do is we will get into our, we have one matter that is before us before we get into the purpose of this special meeting, which is the 45-story Avenue project. This is the application of getting into public hearings. This is the application of Christopher Crump. This is 44 Purchase Street, Unit 1. This is a matter continued from, to be continued to November 25th on the request of the applicant. It says special permit for non-conformities. And is there anyone here from the applicant who should be heard? May we just simply take on the continuance on the request? Okay, so the applicant has made a request via email. And so, members of the ZBA, do we have a motion to continue and a second?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the 44 Purchase Street, Unit B, special permit for non-conformities, public hearing to November 25th.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton. And Mr. Ginter, seconded. Motion's made to continue as requested to the hearing of 11:25 by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Ginter. Calling the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Ginter.
Yeah.
Mr. Igerman.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That is six in the affirmative. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Matters continue. Thank you for the motion and the second. So with that, we will get right into our continuation of our 45-story Avenue, Fort Plaza Realty Trust. I just want to say for anyone that's in the room, if you haven't been to one of these meetings before, allow me the further indulgence to just walk everyone through exactly what we do in the business of this work. And this is consistent with every hearing that we have, and indeed, probably every public hearing. But what I like to do is just sort of walk everyone through sort of what it is you're going to hear, you know, sort of tell them what you're going to tell them, then tell them, then tell them what you told, which are the, this is the wisdom of my grant attorney, by the way. So in that spirit, essentially what we do is I will hear, I will read the public notice. We will then hear from the applicant. We will go through the sequence as follows normally, though not tonight. We will hear from the applicant with respect to additional information that we're taking in as a zoning board. We then go to public comments. And then after public comments, we then go to questions from the board. I want to say that during public comment, we ask that anyone who wishes to speak, please, you do not need to take the podium. We will ask you, however, actually, do we need them to take the podium in order to be heard for anyone that we're broadcasting to online?
We would request that folks come to the podium mainly because you'll be closer to the owl that will pick up your voice. I'm not actually using that speaker on the podium, but just because the owl will be closer to you.
Good, good point, and my apologies for that inconvenience, but we do ask that you do that, only insofar as the fact that we are publishing not just here in live meeting, but also for the time being, we are still using this owl device to publish and broadcast in real time online so that folks can hear us, but just ask them to take the mic. We do ask that for the benefit of Ms. Joy to record your name and address. You may rise and speak with respect to anything you wish to share. It needn't be for or against. You're welcome to identify yourselves that way if you wish, but there is no requirement to say that I am pro or con. We invite you to do that, but by no means do you need to. I will just simply ask you to kindly take the mic, give us your name and address, and share your thoughts. We do ask, however, that you kindly govern yourselves with the courtesy of others in the room regarding time. We do ask that you kindly try to keep your remarks within two minutes. I have exercised wide discretion and always would to give you time to sort of finish a thought. And if it goes long, I will be as courteous as possible to sort of cue you to say, you know, kindly sort of bring it to a close so that we can hear the extent of your thoughts, but also make time for others. Once we finish public comment in the room, I'll then go to public comment online. Anyone online will raise their hand virtually and allow us to know that they wish to speak. We'll open their mic, they'll do the same, and the same will apply. They'll be here. Once we get through public comments, we'll go to questions from the board. If you wish to frame your public comment, I'll say this, in the form of a question, we invite you to do so, but please know that we mean you no discourtesy if we do not respond to your question in that moment. It is no intended discourtesy to anyone, but rather simply our adherence to the Roberts rules of order with respect to how we take in this information. You may frame your public comment.
What rule the size of the current building? It shouldn't be four stories. It should remain one story. I also close with the fact that I think if Kmart had a situation where there were 200 cars in the parking lot every day, with 800 people in the store every day, they may realize it is not a what you would report in the first place.
Thank you, sir. Yes, yes.
Everyone, Lisa Medina Smith, 175-story Avenue. So I have two comments relating to pedestrian safety improvements. So in the last hearing, there was a lot of debate on whether or not the left turn signal was a matter of convenience or a matter of safety. I'd like to hear from the peer reviewer on their position, given that the traffic modeling is vehicle-only, does not include bikes or pedestrians, their position on how we should use that as a data point when considering the safety improvements, given that is a major gap in terms of what the mix of usage will be once this property is built. I'm very supportive of a left turn signal. It's going to be not only improvement for safety, but it's also been improvement in terms of traffic flows. We know that that is a big pinch point in terms of traffic. I'd also like to see or address more details around some of the in-site pedestrian sidewalks. I still, even with the latest grab, there still doesn't seem to be a path to have pedestrians get in the Plaza two-story avenue. I know there was a position to use Low Street, but when you look at Low Street, that's actually not an accessible pathway for folks to go from low to story. So that would be a significant inconvenience for anybody that is unable to go through that. And as a matter of convenience, people are not going to go the long way to get to Story Ave. So I think we need to address what is the path to get to Story Ave with the increase in pedestrian traffic. The last thing I would like to address as well is that there's a lot of question around scale. I did see some of the architectural, like photorealistic renderings. That is a very helpful way to kind of visualize in the current space. But I think what folks are kind of getting troubled with is what does it look like relative to Kmart? And what is the incremental increase in height? So I think that's really, it's hard to kind of get a sense of that just from a, without seeing it side by side or over like you.
Very good, thank you. Yes, sir.
Gary Boy, 78 Longfellow Drive. This may not even fall under the purview of the ZBA, but as I listen more and more to people discussing affordable housing, I'm coming to the conclusion that people are confusing affordable housing with low-income house. The difference is vast. The definition, not the same. And I think somebody has got to explain that when they refer to median incomes for affordable housing, that median income includes the salaries of the city of Boston, not just Newbury. So affordable housing, to point a break, ain't cheap. And somebody, it might be in someone's best interest to explain what affordable housing is and why we're doing it. I think that's probably one area in this whole, that's kind of come up short. You've kind of made assumptions that people understand that. And maybe they don't, certainly I didn't initially. And I think that I'm coming to the conclusion that a lot of people don't. Affordable housing is not low-income housing.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to take a point of privilege as chair and I'm going to address that gentleman's comment with respect to defining affordable housing, and it's so central to our work, that I think it's worthy of a momentary pause, and I will ask Attorney Orsman, our city solicitor, to help us and help each of us sort of better understand exactly what it is we're talking about. And I think that's important before we proceed with continued public comment, counselor. All right, yes. Oh, yeah, the microphone, absolutely. It is off.
So this project, this application is coming to us under chapter 40B, which is a specific statute for low and moderate income housing. Meaning to even bring this project, you can't hear me.
Derek, could you say it? Just it would be easier for both of you to hear that.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you. You have to have it closer to your mouth. This whole application is coming to us under chapter 40B of the general laws, which is the specific statute for moderate and low-income housing. To even bring an application under this statute, which entitles the applicants to certain waivers, they have to bring at least 25% of the units as low or moderate income housing, meaning that those units are priced at 80% of the area median income, which is a Boston metric area median income. Now that income is going to vary per unit because it differs whether it's like a one family, a two family, or a four family. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, we can probably put them up and post them for people who are interested, and you'll actually see what that 80% number is. But so to answer your question, at least 25% must be priced at 80, 80% of the area median income. There will be by statute a D restriction, meaning there's no skirting that requirement. It's going to be a restriction on this property in the industry of these. And I guess the other thing that's kind of worth noting and maybe explains the 100% comment earlier, let me get you off the hook on this one. If the special rules under this statute do not apply once a city or town gets 10% of its housing as subsidizing, subsidized housing, put on subsidized housing inventory. And in a rental project like this, although 25% are lower moderate income housing, the entire 100% gets on the subsidized housing industry, meaning that the city of Newburyport after this project would be above that 10%, and wouldn't have any obligations under chapter 40B in the future. That answers the question, anything more?
I'll say, thank, thank you, counselor. So just to restate for a moment before we continue, we will make sure that I'll ask up our planning director, Mr. Port, if you could post in the city's website exactly what our 80% of AMI is, so that we can drill down to the bedrock of exactly what number we're talking about. I think that's something that we can attempt to provide with more particularity and and this way, you know, what we have, what we aspire that each and every one of our, you know, fellow citizens, fellow residents have as well. With that, and thank you, Attorney Orsman. So with that further public comment.
Not, not a comment, just a question. I got the implication, I hope, I don't know if I'm right or wrong. Is there going to be a limited number of cars per unit? Someone's mentioned 200 cars. I'm assuming if there's 200 plus units, there'll be one to three cars per unit, and you can do the math as well as I can, so there won't be. If I own or lived in one of these units, I'm not going to be limited to the number of cars my, me and my family can have, is that correct?
I'll, I'll say this, Mr. Peroni, with respect, because I don't want to, as I said at the outset, I want to try to resist the temptation for me to want to answer your public comment in the form of a question with an answer. But there is a traffic and parking analysis that's part of this. I will say that we, we will be, we will be permitting as part of this project, parking and traffic, and the number of spaces that are being provided by the developer that are being identified and counted will be identified as part of this project with respect to how units are used, parking, that is yet to be determined, but I, I will aspire to, as will we all, to answer that question better as this unfolds. Note though, that I hear and we hear your question. I just can't answer at the moment because I don't have that data. But the data is evolving and it's out there. And I, I appreciate your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peroni. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Nettle, I live at Ninefold and Drive, which is off of Low Street. My husband is a 65-year resident, I'm only 41 years because of 24 years I've been in Newbury, do not count if you ask my husband. I would like to thank the board for their careful questioning of the presentations in prior Kmart development meetings. I have faith you will maintain the integrity and character of Newburyport. In fact, many long-term residents and taxpayers are counting on you to do so. My first concern is the advisability of building 212 residences, but what could result in upward of 400 residents at the edge of a street that currently sees 15,500 vehicles pass by per day? Current traffic in Newburyport is often an issue on High Street as well as Low Street. How can we handle more and more? Vanessa and Associates, first slide six, August 26th presentation, titled Traffic Impact Assessment, reported 449 additional vehicles entering and exiting per day due to the project. Adding 20 transit trips, that brings the number to 469 a day. I am concerned about the traffic turning left, entering the project from Low Street coming from 113. Vanessa and Associates report this project impact as only causing an increase of 31 vehicles that will make a left turn during peak traffic. Does that count include Amazon, FedEx deliveries, school vehicles, handicap van, and council of aging vehicles for over 400 residents at this development? Referring to August, October 22nd Low Street Pedestrian Alternative Document proposed by Vanessa Associates, is a hybrid signal on Low Street that will stop traffic from pedestrians. And I'm doing my best with this because there was a heck of a lot of files, I'm trying to figure out what's the latest thing that's been posted. Without a left turn lane, the city will pay $180,000. With a left turn lane cost increases to $720,000. A full traffic light signal is rated at $1.2 million. These expenses will be city expenses. There has been no discussion other than a possible left turn lane for handling the increased traffic coming off of 113. So with cars lining up to turn left and traffic already bumper to bumper all the way from North Atkinson heading west toward 113 at rush hour, will people just stop and let others take this left turn? Not in my experience. People wishing to turn left will have a long wait, but lose patience, increasing the likelihood of accidents. It seems the only solution to this is to put in a traffic light with a left turn signal, widening the road, and building a left turn lane. This will cost the city over a million dollars. We have people leaving the industrial park, hospitals, three schools, two daycares, and now a youth center that they want to head onto Route 95 at the end of low during busy parts of the day. I often take a right from Market Basket, head to High Street, rather than take the shorter route by cutting through and turning left from the Port Plaza lot on Low Street, which is closer to my home. I can't help but think this type of avoidance of Low Street will increase traffic on an already crowded High Street. Another concern I have is the visual impact of a four-story, 212-unit building at the entrance to Newburyport. Is this the urban look, the impression we want to give people entering our beautiful city? Right now, the current one-story building is well hidden behind beautiful trees. While these streets are scheduled to remain, far as I know, at the last slide I was able to detect, they will no longer hide the building from view. Another question I have is I saw in slide three of peer review of the Gamble Associates comments on 1028, a huge retaining wall picture. One slide is titled Greenscreen Precedent Imagery, and I'm unsure if the height of this wall has been revealed and the photos don't indicate an attractive view. I am unsure if this wall is to be constructed on the Low Street border, and would appreciate that being clarified. Drainage issues involved in building an underground garage as well as the increased size of the building concerning. I have experience of seeing the expansion of the Fort Rehab and what the displacement of water there has done to my neighborhood and the quill run in terms of drainage issues. There is talk of a discharge pipe handling drainage from the plaza needing replacement that will be a city expense as well. The project claims the city has been in need of doing this all along, and this is not going to be the result of a possible increased runoff. When asked about the amount of runoff from the project would generate, I believe the engineer was unable to give a figure at the last meeting. So lots of unknowns here. As a resident and taxpayer who have supported this city for years, I do not see how this project adds to the character and integrity of our beautiful city. Affordable housing is needed, and construction of it away from one of the busiest intersections in town is preferred. Current C and J lot, land off Spalton Road, empty green space in the industrial park, as well as any additional space near the train station come to mind. For residents of Low Street and the side streets off of Low Street, as well as for all Newburyport residents, proposed project will create increased traffic, pedestrians, and drainage issues. For all of Newburyport residents, it will, it will create an increase in spending to safely accommodate and educate the tenants of the building. Our city has many needs already, we have yet to see sidewalks on Hill Street. Caving continues to be needed, and we have yet to pay to furnish and staff our youth center. Health insurance for employees is increasing, as is cost of materials for all projects, including the aforementioned youth center currently under construction. Schools and our aging infrastructure, both predictable and unprecedented expenses. The mayor stated at the debate, when citing lack of skills for building in Newburyport, that we are in some ways a victim of our success. Viewing the payment arrangement made for the developer of this project with the sewer, many residents may always feel, may already feel like the victim of this project. I am asking you to consider the needs of the people who already live here when considering the advisability of adding a project of this size at this busy location. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments in the room? Yes, sir. And I want to remind everyone to that we're going to have a public comment at the end of the material that we're going to take in this evening as well, so you're welcome to, please feel free to, to speak in both sections, but I will ask the courtesy that if you've already shared public comment on a topic at the outset, you need to restate it at the second public comment, just in the interest of everyone having a moment to speak. And sir, you have the, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Eric Tracy, I live at Two Datty Lane, which was stopped by Turkey Hill. In fact, I'm a fan of having the housing be dense and this location as well gives a lot of advantages versus building off Scotland, or even if West Newbury decided to build two or three new houses, traffic would be what it was. The advantages are when people can walk to accomplish their daily needs. Can they safely walk to the grocery store? Yes, can they safely walk to the drugstore? Maybe, depending on that one crossing where a woman died earlier this year. Where, you know, they're going to be able to walk to go and get coffee. I don't know. Right? I'm not sure why the design doesn't include retail space in the ground floor. I'm not sure why the design prefers a 4,000-square-foot driveway that they are calling pedestrian-friendly. I don't know anyone who's going to sit on a bench next to a driveway. Right? Make it a real, people-focused plaza? Or don't even do it. The driveway doesn't seem to serve much of a purpose. But I really value also Kendall's comments about pedestrian safety on the outskirts of this project. We need as a city to look at the street and look at how we can increase lanes, and also look at High Street, excuse me, Story Avenue, we've got High Street. I want to share an image with you guys, with everybody here, a photo that I took earlier this year of what appears to be an elderly couple trying to go grocery shopping. Right? As was already mentioned, there are rumors senior housing facilities within a short walking distance of the location. I follow, I think he, I think that's a, the members have received. We're excited. All right, the Story Avenue entrance has two inbound lanes, pardon. And I don't know why that's there. Right, here you see a couple slides to walk where there is no, no sidewalk, and they're being followed by an 18-wheeler. It's a very, very scary and honestly sad situation. It's just, it's sad all around, and this is something that is unlike the rest of Low Street, this is directly on the Port Plaza property. And it easily fits, if you look at the second page, with about 230 of the size of it. Think the next, I mean, the rest of the sidewalk, that has been, what does this? But I see this as a very easy fix, half a point or two car length, it's having to be sidewalk, there would have to be a wide shoulder or what have you that could accommodate any 18-wheeler that's trying to turn and make delivery. Right, you can already see that the 18-wheeler has enough space in that building. And I feel for people who are trying to walk there from the surrounding communities, whether across High, or whether just up Story Avenue, behind the Seadust and Shell Station. Make this project as walkable as possible, and it will also help do limits to the traffic impact.
Thank you. Just because we received it for confirmation that the applicant certainly has a copy of the other folks on this side. Counsel, if you could just hand out the non-ones. We usually don't take in copies, but what we do, I want to make sure that everyone sort of sees what we're seeing as it goes. It all becomes part of the record for the matter. Okay, anyone else in the room who wishes to speak? Yes?
Hello, my name is Sue Tab, I live at Five Virginia Lane. I brought notes because I work in radio and I talk for a living, and I've never been very good at staying within a time limit, so I would do my best. First of all, I just want to thank all of you guys, I know how hard you're working on this issue and how much time and attention you're giving it, so I think most of us thank you for that. For me, I don't think anybody would say they're against affordable housing. I am concerned about scale, which a lot of people have talked about. I'm concerned that there's going to be a disconnect in town between the historic charming nature of High Street and the downtown district, and what Low Street is going to look like, and this is going to turn the page in the history of our city, because it is going to be a different feel and fabric, there's just no way around it, it's going to be a massive building. So I just want you guys to think about that, because I think that a lot of us live here because we like the quaint historic feel of a seaport community, and the reason people pay a lot of money to come here is because a lot of times they want to escape big apartment buildings and that kind of feel, so I think it's just something we need to think about, you know, this is going, and what is this opening the door to? Is this going to set a precedent for more big development along Low Street? You know, what's going to happen to the You know, what's going to happen to the land adjacent to Hodges across from there? Maybe not as big of a building, but is there going to be more development there? And I think that that's just a concern that a lot of us have, especially those of us who. Live on that side of town. I actually lived on High Street at one point as well. And I wonder if this would pass along High Street, and I wonder if it would pass if it were downtown. And is there a way that we can still get the same effect and get more affordable housing, but not have it all packed on one three-acre parcel of land? Is there a way to spread that out in the city and still get the same results? I don't know, you know, in Port Plaza, can it be spread out? Because that building is going to look sort of like a monstrosity up against those smaller buildings, and I think that. You know, nobody would say they don't want affordable housing in the city, but there is a. You know, there is an optic to this. That is going to be concerning, and then you have all of the safety concerns, which. The walking along the street and all of that obviously is a concern, but. I love the the adjectives that you used, and I forgot your first name, Susan, Susan, Susan and Susan. She said character and integrity, and I think that those are the things that we have to keep in mind. As we're looking at this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, in the back.
My name's Anne Clark and I live at one Charmance Key Drive. There's a few things. First of all, I, everyone's saying affordable housing. You want to know what? Tell the people how much the housing's gonna cost, and I can bet you it's not affordable for most people that are looking for affordable housing. I'm going to tell you right now, I've lived in Newburyport all my life. And if I were to move up there, I'm sure I couldn't afford it. Okay? I can only afford to live here because my mortgage is paid off. All right? Problem number one. Problem number two. The traffic. The traffic on Low Street is horrendous. You want to know? Go camp out there for a while, and everyone's been, I've noticed in the last few months, everyone's cutting through the backside of Kmart. Where they're not even supposed to go, the where the deliveries go. So everyone's going there. So where is this traffic all going to come? And then I like the nice little light that you put in the crosswalk there. Up a little further, but I sat there the other day going up. Towards Story Ave. And watched many people ride by. The flashing light while the people are waiting to cross. All right, so. And you want to put more cars in? And you say you're only going to let so many cars in? The facility, one for a house or whatever apartment? Oh, what are you, what are you gonna do? Say, oh, you can't live here? Sorry, you bought another car, you gotta leave? No, they're gonna park it somewhere else. And then the people who live here, who want to go shopping at Shaw's or whatever, are not going to be able to. Use the facilities that we have, okay? I've heard a lot of thing about water and drainage. You know, these costs should not come to the people of Newburyport. That's all I'm gonna say. You know, we pay enough in taxes and enough enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Let me go to this side of the room. Yes, sir. And then what I'd like to do, ladies and gentlemen, is I'd like to pair off public comment at this stage. There will be another one at the end of our evening. But we need to, given that we're approaching the eight o'clock hour, I want to gauge our time as well. So we can get into the subject matter of this evening's hearing. And then we'll have public comment again. But I thank everyone for their time, and sir, you, you have. No, no, as long as you, as long as you wish, you know, within reason.
My name's Bill Heckencamp. I live at four B Noble Street. Just anecdotally, yesterday I was made a mistake from trying to go to Market Basket at four o'clock afternoon. After five minutes stopped at at Story. I got an opportunity to turn left. There were three cars in the left-hand turn lane trying to come into Noble Street as traffic was coming out of Shaw's. In the lane out of town, and there were two cars that wanted to turn left out of Chipotle. There's a word for that that starts with cluster, and that goes on all day long. Particularly since the Noble was just repaid. Used to be able to turn two cars, one left, one right at Noble Street. That's been thinned out. So there's only one car that has the opportunity to go left or right. As far as the project, this is all that's about us, just daily traffic that already exists. As far as the project, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I don't like the scale. I think half the size would be more appropriate. For for reference. It's not four stories from Low Street. It's about twenty feet raised from Low Street where the four-story starts. Because it's on a hill. So it's going to look a lot taller than it actually is. Another aside I have is what's going to happen to the undeveloped properties around the area on Low Street. Next to Hodges and the open bastards of next to Colby Farms. That looks like a prime spot to throw a couple hundred cobbler. If, and additionally, people have been talking about this being about affordable housing. It's not. Affordable housing is forced into the project. It's not the, it's not the purpose of the project. Can I ask what the affordable housing rate is going to be to move in there? Three grand a month, four grand?
I'm going to, I'm going to allow attorney orisman to address that for you, sir.
We could probably post it again, but it's, it's calculated at thirty percent. Of the bare area of median income of someone making eighty percent of the area of median income.
And we'll, we'll post.
To move in, you can't make more than eighty percent of the. Area median income for the Boston metropolitan area, where the rent has to be calculated at about thirty percent of your income.
Right. It's my understanding that median income in Newburyport is about a hundred and forty-five grand. Eighty percent of that is hundred and fifteen. In order to qualify for affordable housing, you have to make thirty percent of the eighty percent. Which is thirty-six thousand dollars. That pretty much takes up.
You just have to be earning eighty percent of the area median income to qualify for housing. You then pay a rent that is thirty percent of your income. That is a maximum. That's what it means.
So the rent is on a sliding scale based on the, once one qualifies.
Okay, well, I think we could just stop talking about it. Being a formal housing then. Additionally, I'm wondering. Was the CK parking lot ever considered for high density housing? And if not, why?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to take two more questions before we get into the subject matter of this evening. And I want one of them to be online at a minimum. Actually, do we have any questions online? I don't want to ignore our. Our folks online. Any hands online?
I don't have any hands at the moment.
No hands online. Anyone else in the room for the moment before we, we pause public comment and we'll revisit this this evening? Seeing no further hands for the moment. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for participating in this first segment of public comment. With that, we will go to the applicant attorney meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the reference. We meet across the thirty-third street in Newburyport. And I'd just like to tell you what we're going to cover tonight based upon our prior meetings, Mr. Chair. We're going to have our engineer from Bowler, Randy's going to overview what we think is the wrap-up of the civil. Based upon our comments from the last meeting. Also Brendan from Bowler, who's our landscape architect, will review the revised landscape architect plan. Based upon the city's peer review engineer. And then we have our architectural team, Ed and Jay Moon is going to be here. To present the plans as a result of the comments from the city's peer review architect as well. And then if there's time in the end, there may be some discussion about traffic. So we wanted to try to wrap up those two items and go from there.
Very good.
Good evening. For the record, Randy Marilyn Bowler, and as Lisa mentioned, I'm just going to touch upon some of the follow-up items we spoke about. Back in late October. And we did some, provide some additional materials to the board. The first one is just this, this and our plan that's going to stand by a professional landscaper. Previous version was simply in draft form. But we want us to provide this to the board, again, just to show that. This, it's two-point-six-five acres that is being carved out of the existing Port Plaza property. And just wanted to bring it to the board for record. Certainly, you know, I think if, if. I think at some point there will need to be some endorsement of this plan provided to the board to prove that we can certainly provide a mild wire for endorsement once that happens. Andy, can you just go to the next slide?
Let me know if you want me to zoom in anywhere. Yeah.
So this is just an easement exhibit that we have provided. I know that there was some questions about. Some easements what exist and what's being proposed. So this plan does show, it shows the existing easements in red. Throughout the Port Plaza property, and it also shows the proposed easements that are being created as part of the project. In green. And you can see it provides some, you can see those hatched areas kind of around the new building where those new easements would be located. And again, I think, I know we previously kind of mentioned this, but the reciprocal easement agreement would be developed and finalized before the building permitted issued. For this project between the project site and Port Plaza property. And Andy, we can go to the next one. Great. And I know there was some discussions regarding pedestrian access. Sidewalk connections in and around the plaza and around the Port Plaza property as well as the project area itself. So this plan, I know there's a lot of colors on it. It, it, it's, you know, we're intending to show some of the existing sidewalk connections in blue, so those are what exist today. As well as there's some existing crosswalks, there's some, some striped areas that were shown in like an agenda, the purple color right there. And then. The green shaded areas, sidewalk connections that are being proposed on the Port Plaza property. Andy, if you're highlighting those, yeah, so those are all new connections that will be provided on the Port Plaza property. And then there's also, of course, some new sidewalk connections that are being provided that are shaded in red. Those are around the new building itself. You can see there's virtually a sidewalk around the perimeter of the entire new building. And again, we just wanted to show this plan to the board, so we know that there was questions about what's being proposed in terms of sidewalk connections. We did look at a sidewalk connection to Low Street, unfortunately, we can't do it because it can't be an ADA accessible connection. Grading is just too steep. I'm sorry, the Story Ave, not. I balled it. We did look at a sidewalk connection to Story Ave. And then just. The, like, just the last item that we had was, I know that John Eric did provide a letter. Last week. Basically indicating that I think he essentially. The base that he had, we addressed all of his concerns with the exception of the. The erosion that's occurring at the outfall. Folks recall, there's the, the outfall on the opposite side of the street, right where Andy's pointing there. It's on private property. The city has the easement for it. And with the exception of that, it addresses his concerns. But I just want to reiterate that we are reducing, you know, we're certainly reducing runoff rates, runoff volumes. And we are meeting with preliminary management standards in terms of that outfall area. And as a reminder to that outfall area collectively, not only the project site, the Port Plaza site. But a large area in the surrounding area. And that percentage that was discussed, I think it was a question at the last meeting. Just about percentage of the project site in comparison to the entire watershed area drained to that outfall. It's around eight and a half percent. But that's it. I'll just first kind of wrap up some of the other civil.
Thank you. We, we may very well. Anything further?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm working at Bradford, working with the architect on the project. And yeah, we have a presentation for you this evening. Organized into two parts. You could advance to the next slide. Thank you. The first part of the presentation. Is a continued response to the comments that we've received from the Architectural Peer Review and Landscape Peer Review. From Gamble Associates that again. We very much appreciate and. Do believe the, the project due to that input has, has continuously improved. And we have adjustments and revisions to show you tonight. That are continuation of that process. So the comments let me know that last time included. From the Gamble Associates report. Focus on the entry courtyard. As it defined as number one on this image. The Low Street edge and the garage retaining wall. Material hierarchy and brick expression on the architecture. Some elements related to landscape design and stormwater features. And then as part two of our presentation, and my colleague John will cover that aspect. We received additional comments that Andy forwarded to us from the board. We received those on November fourth. And those comments related to providing. Additional material samples. We have both the digital. Presentation to show our post-material palette. As well as our physical samples in the rear of the room that we're obviously happy to share. We'll also cover rooftop unit locations and our methods for screening. That rooftop equipment. And then finally, as part two of this presentation that John will cover. We prepared three additional perspective views, our photo montages, if you will. One further west on Low Street. Another one also on Low Street from Vantage Point further east. And then finally, a view from the entrance. From Story Ave and the entrance to the plaza, kind of a longer view from Story Ave. Towards the front entry of the building. So this first aspect. Covers, again, the Gamble's peer review, and it's focused on the courtyard drop-off and entry plaza.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brendan Carey. I'm managing architect with Bowler. So. The previous plan had a sidewalk in this courtyard and a vehicular turnaround. We're challenged with kind of making it a nicer arrival experience, so. Designed a shared vehicular and pedestrian courtyard. Paid with, you know, specialty pavers. It's all flush condition. It can be gazed off and roped off and used for events, but it's. It's more of an arrival experience that can be used by cars. There are fowlers and planters to provide safety and. Veteran to use benches. There's increased landfill in the courtyard, street trees, shade trees. Traps and ground covers, and really it's. It's more of a shared courtyard that is faster and friendly and really just an arrival experience. The kind of frames of building upscale. And there's sidewalk improvement, there's a. Landscape privacy against the residential units and then the overall, kind of street feel that helps scale the building. Then on the next line. The Low Street side where we are protecting the existing Armstrong maples. There was a letter today by the tree warden asking that we protect these trees, which our intentions to do so. Tree protection pences, making sure that the trunks are protected. Just our intention is to keep that because they're important to scale the building. They're great trees, so. We want to keep that and keep that street tree, including. That character along Low Street. And then retaining walls, we are screening with an evergreen hedge. And then the chain walls, uh, we are screening with an evergreen hedge. That really between the the building massings, you're kind of hiding that. That wall and staircase and just um. Having a green edge on motion. Oh, sorry. Thank you, um. In the courtyard on the upper right hand side, there's a blue box, um, we are intending to have a children's play area incorporated into the um. Into the social gathering spaces. Um, it's it's a blue box, but now that it will be developed. Space.
Thanks Brendan, and um. I will now cover um some of the architectural aspects related to the peer review. Um, and these these next four slides are are set up as before and afters really, um, so this first pairing of slides. Um, responds to the work, um, the the peer review comment and the and the follow up work that we've done. Um, on the peer review related to the entry entry court. Um, so this is, this is the view, if you will, the before view, the view that's associated and included in our May twenty fifth. Application. And this is the the image and the design that that um gamble associates. Reviewed and responded to in in their report. And then it was noted in their report specifically focused on this entry court. That the um material hierarchy could be improved. With a with a focus um on the entry court and really making sure that the primary facades in this case. That the the center of the of the um entry court. Um, is clouding material that's appropriate for its setting and is specifically requesting that we explore the the use. Of more brick for for primary facades such as this. Oh, Andy, if you could go to the next slide. So af- after um, um. Considering the peer review comments and and one working session um with with David. Um, this is our response to to the comments that we that we heard, um, same same vantage point, um. Um, with uh um design adjustments, so as you can see, first of all, the um expanded brick. Across the court. And and we agree um with the comment that that this we think does strengthen the presence. And that from a hierarchical standpoint is appropriate for such an important elevation. I I should note um one change here as well, it actually wasn't in in the report, but it was one that came up during our our working. Group session. With David, and that was a discussion about the main entry uh to the building. And in our in our original design and the application, the primary entry to the building. Is sort of in the northeast um in this uh, yeah. Just to the right on this image. Um, facing towards the parking area, but it it came up as we adjusted. The the entry court into into a place that we think is more civic, more welcoming. We we should certainly think about moving that entrance, and that's just what we've done. Based on on discussions in that working group, and you can see straight ahead now, I think it's quite obvious and clear. Where the main entrances to the building identified by the sign in the canopy. And the uh amounts of transparency and storefront glazing, so again, a stronger focal point, you think a stronger sense of arrival. And a and a stronger um stronger public space. All around, um, one other thing I would note on this side of my colleague John will elaborate on it a little bit in a moment. You would notice, um, we actually also did raise the the parapet of the building, exterior building wall. A bit. And that was in in response to a comment that that um we were asked to consider visibility of the mechanical equipment. And um frankly, when we studied the view from from Story Ave, that really has a very, very long uh. View car across a parking lot. We recognize that we did need to raise that parapet a bit to to make sure we screen that equipment. So that part of that wall in this revised design has has been has been raised, so that's another change that I would know. And then similarly, opposite the the um more public. Entry court. This is the the primary amenity for residents to the pool courtyard. Um, and again, the comment from from David Gamble was um fun of hierarchy. Again, at the at the terminus of this courtyard, this pool courtyard is another very important facade. Uh, maybe a more private entry. For folks on the using the pool courtyard, but nonetheless, an important, important entry, and it's really the same comment outlined in the in the peer review. This wall would rely heavily on on, in this case, fiber cement panels, it's pretty important facade and kind of lacked uh hierarchy. So our revised design on the next slide. Again, uh, shows a similar response to the one that we proposed on the entry court. Um, again. Expanded brick for this, what is definitely a primary facade like the entry court. Um. And then again, again, similar to the entry court, this facade that we think really can now anchor this this important courtyard. That frames, that frames the pool. Um, area, so a central bay and and a strong central visual focus, we think. And and again, like the fronts and and this quarter in in many other aspects of the design, we think a a stronger connection. To Newbury Court's brick tradition. And the next slide please. And then finally, before I turn it over to my colleague John, the um, this shows our proposed material palette. And um, it was requested um by. The board that we also bring physical samples and and we do again have some brick samples. In the um rear of the room. Um, that we brought this evening, but this is a a sort of um electronic um. Sampling of the materials and again, consistent with the comments of the peer review, it's it's a palette that thinks a lot about hierarchy. So again, those primary facades with a palette of brick. In this case, a a red brick that would be a sort of warm. Um, brick that's really the primary material for the building, again, referencing so many buildings in Newbury Court's downtown. And then at the base, as you may have noticed in the in the renderings, is a lighter tone brick that's in the lower left hand corner. That's uh kind of anchors the base at at the pedestrian level. And then to the right of the two mission materials are are the secondary materials in the hierarchy of materials, and those typically. You'll see and I I hope you've seen in the renderings are generally set back from the pri- primary facade, so they're stepped back and they're usually. On the upper, upper levels of the building, not right at the pedestrian level on primary facades. But there with um, as you can see, kind of gray tones meant to to recess be less um, again, primary focus in this hierarchy. But it's a combination of of cement board panels in these kind of gray uh tones. Some in a panel, some in a clapboard texture, we also have some board and baton, and then some darker um aluminum. That um is a frame for the storefront material. And I would turn it over to John to cover our approach to mechanical equipment locations and screening.
Good evening, uh, for the record, my name is John Zinger, I'm an architect with UT, yeah. Um, so continuing uh from Ed's.
We can hear, yeah, briefly, well, Miss Perry, just a moment, um. Just because um we have folks on both sides of the room, could I ask you if you could just speak up a a. Change your mic, and uh, actually, you know what? Yeah, this. Does that, that only broadcasts online, this will be. Broadcast in the room, so. If I could. Ask your indulgence, um. And thank you, folks, thank you, we're we're. We're. I was, I was about to, I was about to leap up myself, I, you know, it's it's hard, but we want to make sure that we try to make it work, uh, thank you. Yeah, you know what, it's it's tangled, we uh. Thank you so much. If you could actually hold it, you know, and and feel free to step forward or move the podium forward if that's. Let us speak closer.
Closer into the, okay, um. Okay, I'll just.
No, please continue, I'm gonna. I'm gonna, I'm gonna break the forged wall here for a moment. Um, okay.
Um.
I can stand here and hold it, but I don't. Um, I think that this might be helpful. And. Thank you.
Sorry about that, um. Uh, yeah, so for the record, my name is John Zinger, I'm an architect with the Art of Action Queen. Um, so continuing from Ed's uh presentation, I'm here to talk about the proposed location of root path units. And our approach to uh screening these units. Um, and I will also show you uh the three long views um perspective, long view perspective renderings from Low Street and Curry Avenue. So on this uh image on the slide, um, you uh can see a building section. Uh, we we are cutting through, so we have a key plan um on the top right hand side of the screen. Uh, we are cutting uh north south uh through the building facing east side of the site. Um, the short uh wings, uh two wings are on the right and uh left and right hand side of um. The the screen and you will see the courtyard uh that's centered. Um, and the parking is located at the bottom of this image. Um, and just to reen, everybody, the low street is on the right hand side of this image. And the plaza, uh, Port Plaza is on the left, so you can clearly see. The uh site grading, um, how much it slopes from Port Plaza down to Low Street, um. Concealing the parking garage level, um, that's in the site, um. So also in this image, you can see um. Uh, just really talking about uh where we're proposing to place the convention units. Um, they are sitting on top of the highest level of the roof set. Um, this is uh uh, we're we're proposing the mechanical system, um, what's called a heat pump system, it's a split. Uh, system where we have uh outdoor. Conveending units, um, that is connected to an indoor air handling units, um, that works as a combo. Um, and because of this system, I, the outdoor um condensates are very compact. Um, which allows us to be able to um. Reduce the size of these units and um be able to conceal. A lot better than um larger sizes of um different type of mechanical system. Um, we don't have the exact. Uh, model or unit of this unit yet because of the facing is uh. Right now, it's in a very early stage of the project. Um, but typically for this type of uh made dry self-decorated units. Um, these condensing units are approximately um three feet tall. Uh, about four feet wide and about eighteen inches deep, that sits on about two feet tall stand. Um, so this might change in various. Depending on the uh type of the unit, um, but that's just the average um we've been using in our previous. Uh, products that we worked on. Um, so as uh Ed had explained in the previous renderings. Uh, we extended up the uh the parapet wall. Um, as part of uh the uh response to. Mr. Gamble's uh submission, so architectural design. Improvements, uh, but also as a device to screening these uh units. Uh, so considering the height of this proposed convincing units that's sitting on the. Roof deck, um, and also uh looking at the side of um taller parapet walls. Um, from the street line, the sideline, um. View towards the perennial wall, um, these convincing units are very well uh. So uh, just to kind of point out two things, uh, one more thing from this building section is that. Um, I just wanted to point out the uh Low Street side building facade stepping back on building design strategy. Um, and we worked very hard to really um understand this uh. Side of the street. Knowing that um a lot of people will have um. Will will walk past um this uh this street every day. Um, and we also really wanted to uh make this part of the facade, building facade to be part of um. This beautiful, we reported. Architecture as well, so you see this uh low three buildings, um, is uh what we will show you in a second. The brick base building and then the stepping back, um, the upper level and then the one behind, they're sitting. Far quite far back, um. And they will be just seen as um like a background image of. The brick buildings that we're proposing, it's um. So, onto the next page. Um, so this is um existing condition view from Story Avenue, um, the main entrance driveway into the beach support plaza. You can see the um outline of the facade of existing key marks, um. As everyone knows, it's a, it's a bit typical big boss retail architecture with. Um, really no instance of uh interesting elements to the envelope of the skin, there are no windows, um. So we are just kind of comparing this image to our next image we're proposing here. Um. So this is that long view that Ed had uh mentioned earlier, um. You can see, I'm not sure if you can see clearly, because um. A little bit maybe, uh, yeah. So the uh focal point of this view is the entry courtyard, um, as exactly, yes, um. Entry courtyard of this uh north elevation of this building. Um, facing the uh the mainstream of uh this lot, uh. And also um. Due to uh having the parapet wall extended up, um. From this uh. This perspective, uh. The uh the unit store group copies will be concealed um beyond uh the parallel. Next slide, this um existing condition view from. Low Street, a view uh from east part of the site, so looking towards. Story Avenue, um, you can see the uh glimpse of the H bar building. Um, right behind the tree lines there. And you can see the uh existing trees that's lining up the uh low streets, which will be preserved. Um, just for a reference point, um, you can see that entry driveway to the east part of that um. Of the site and which we will be using. So the next slide, um. So here we can see the proposed building. Little dark in the room, um. So um, so here you can really see how the step back, um. Building facades uh that design strategy is. Um, well conceived in this view, um. You really get the impression of the three story brick building. Um, because um of that step back of these uh upper level facades, they're kind of disappears in a way, um. And also because the building is organized in wings, the short side of the. Those wings are facing the low street, so you have the sense of not just a big block building, but they are more. A smaller scale uh building that are, that gives a a feel of more uh. Uh, multi buildings that's kind of sitting in a row. So this is uh another existing condition view from Low Street, um, to looking towards the site. Um, again, you can see that H marks, uh, so not. A mark, more more you could H mark than. A mark. Facade, um, the side of the wall, um, and also you can see that, um. The parking uh side of uh the parking uh of the key marks. Just that area uh area in the condo streets. Um. Thanks. Bye, please. So. Here, um, again, because the the short legs of the wings that are facing. Towards um this view, uh, you get the sense of um smaller scale buildings kind of broken down into. Um. To the. Uh, smaller building, building size, um, and also you get that sense of, uh, sorry. Um. From this perspective view, um. From this perspective view, with that parapet wall, just wanted to point out that parapet wall is also concealing the, the housing that's sitting behind. That's, any questions?
We, we met and thank you.
Mr. Chair, also just to add a couple of facts, given some of the questions that were asked earlier, I just want to put on the table, the project proposes 261 total parking spaces, of which 238 are underground, as the board knows. And that's kind of consistent with the city's smart growth district. On average, on average, that's 1.23. And the city's smart growth district is divided by the number of bedroom units. So you have to take that into consideration, but it's in that ballpark. But I wanted to make sure I addressed that, it came out earlier. The other thing I wanted to just touch on what Mr. Orsman said related to the affordability. And I think that Caitlin and Andy might be able to just get the current affordable prices from the Boston Way project, which is a, an affordable project and they have 25% affordable units. So the 80% median, area median income includes the greater Boston area. So it's not just Newburyport, it's the greater Boston area. And it's set annually by DHCD or EOHLC, it doesn't actually slide, that rate is set annually and adjusted accordingly for those tenants. So I just wanted to, to make that comment. And with that, I think that we'd like to focus on any questions the board has related to those, the presentations we just made. So hopefully we can wrap up the civil and say that we're done with that. And then talk about any questions you might have on the architectural landscaping, because I think your peer review person is online and then maybe move on beyond that. Then maybe we could close, try to close out those chapters if you will.
Thank you, Tony. I do want to, I know that we have some of our consultants in the room and online. I believe our building commissioner, Greg Oss, is in the room. Mr. Oss, did you want to be heard and since you're in the room, I'd like to give you the mic and floor. And Greg.
I won't be able to use that, won't be able to hold it steady, honestly, but it'll probably not enough. Very good. And while I was under the impression that you had specific questions, I didn't understand some of the notes that were sent to me, honestly. If you have specific questions, I'll address them.
Okay. Do we want to, do we want to ask Mr. Earls to be seated for the moment until we have questions? Or we want to address them now since he's here and at the podium? Yes.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Greg. The applicants, architects told us a couple of weeks ago, they're not seeking any, actually seeking any waivers from the local state, sorry, local building codes. Is that also your understanding? They haven't asked for anything like a sort of building efficiency?
I, I've been approached with nothing except the notes from this body.
Okay, all right. Right, got it. And then also in their original application, going back to the spring, they asked for a reduced fees. Have you been told about that? Do you know anything about that?
I haven't been told, except the notes from this body. And that would be a question for the administration and especially the city council. I just, I, I put a reasonable value or the applicant puts a reasonable value on the project. I agree with it or don't agree with it and success from there.
And so there's a, there's a multiplier based on the reasonable construction cost that you evaluate.
For any size project, it's the same.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board have questions for Mr. Earls while he's, while he's in the room?
I can wait.
Greg, do you mind? That'd be great. And thank you. I didn't mean to, no problem. I'm going to call you up, sum you up for the podium. But I want to make sure we take care of that. I believe we also have Kevin Dandren, who is online. Kevin, can you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Hang on a second, hang on a second. Kevin, can you try to address us again?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead. You'll have to speak very loud because you're coming out of my computer. Unfortunately, the owl for some reason is not picking up the audio there, so. Yeah, so go right ahead. Yep.
Oh, that's great. And ladies and gentlemen, Kevin Dandren, if you're not familiar, is under the TEC and is one of the city's traffic consultants, working to be a peer reviewer on our behalf in, in support of the zoning board. Mr. Dandren, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Oh, gosh.
Speak, speak as loud as you're able to.
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
He said, yes, I can hear you just fine.
Do you want to ask specific questions? I can reiterate as he's, yeah.
Do we have any questions for our traffic consultant based on what we have so far? Yes, Mr. Swan.
Yeah, I just had one, which was Kevin has given us a lot of good input on safety, which is a major concern of ours at this center entrance at going to the Port Plaza. And two meetings ago, Kevin said that the traffic signal is the safest alternative. But last meeting, he was talking about the hawk lights, those red, the red lights that come, come on a step below the traffic lights. Might also have similar safety for pedestrians and I, I'm confused as to which is the safest. Are the traffic lights the safest or you know, this is based on what I've heard before. We've heard from a lot of people tonight. And every time we do a public hearing, we've heard about safety as a primary concern. So I, from our own consultant, I'd like, I don't know if you'll be able to.
Yeah, Kevin, I may have to reiterate as you're speaking, so go ahead and if you can, if you're able to hear that question, you can answer it maybe.
Certainly, I'm, I'm happy to clarify. Can you hear me okay, Andy?
Yeah, it's coming out better. Yeah, keep going. Yep.
Okay. I took my earpiece off, maybe that's better. Yeah, so a couple of meetings ago, I think before some of the different alternatives got refined, including refinements to the hawk alternative. At that time, I did state, in fact, even if you go back to my letter from August 26th, which was my second peer review letter, talked about how, you know, the full traffic signal would be superior from a traffic control standpoint for the Port Plaza traffic, but also given the alternatives that we saw at that time for controlling pedestrians right if they were adjacent to the Port Plaza Center driveway. You know, as we've reviewed different alternatives and made suggestions for refinements, and the hawk came into focus, similar to what we're doing further down the street at the Department of Youth Services that we're designing right now. And we've recommended down at North Atkins. The hawk is a perfectly viable alternative. And I think I stated in the last hearing that both a full traffic signal and a hawk signal are not just, you know, they're not warning devices, they are regulatory devices. So they are requiring motor vehicle traffic to come to a stop when the signal's red and the walk signal is illuminated. With some of the refinements that occurred since, I believe it was the late September hearing, the applicant's team shifted the hawk signal a little bit further to the east, at which point it's not competing with the turning movements from the Port Plaza Center driveway anymore. So as two standard regulatory traffic control devices that require traffic to come to a stop on red, I don't see any measurable differences between the safety characteristics with the refinements that the project team has made.
So when you say there's no measurable difference, are you talking about for pedestrians or for cars and pedestrians?
Or, or pedestrian related safety attributes.
How about for cars? Is it safer to have a full traffic signal?
Undeniably, and I've stated that as well. I think the difference is that you know, I've provided some guidance and input and even caution that while a traffic signal is warranted based on the traffic volumes that turn in and out under today's situation, even before you add traffic, whether it was from a redeveloped, reoccupied Kmart or the 40B project, it's warranted today based on the existing retail plaza traffic. So there is, you know, undeniable benefits for safety for cars getting out of Port Plaza. But at the same time, I've cautioned the board that the traffic signal is not the panacea for everything traffic, because it would now require traffic on Low Street to stop. And the one movement that the applicant's project would measurably increase would be the left turn pocket. Most of the recent concepts in their matrix shows the left turn pocket as one of the improvement measures. So I, I believe that they have taken steps specific to the project to address the safety that is directly related to the 40B. But undeniably, Mr. Swanton, would a full traffic signal would improve the safety characteristics for those getting out of the plaza.
Thank, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dandren. Anyone else on the board have any questions for our traffic consultant? Nope. Mr. Dandren, thanks very much. And if you can just stay online in case we have anything further, we appreciate that.
Certainly.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to, unless there's anything that anyone feels I've missed on the board with respect to additional comments from our peer reviewers or from the applicant, I'd like to close that and move us to questions from the board. With that, I'm going to close presentations for this evening and go to questions from the board.
Mr. Swan, I had one other traffic question, but it was for the Vanessa. And I don't know if, I guess.
He is, yeah. Jeff, are you with us?
I am, yes.
Sorry, do you want to?
Bear with us for a second, Jeff. There's technology here.
All right, Jeff. Yep, we're gonna, go ahead, Ken.
Jeff, I just have one question. You've provided us with a lot of traffic data for cars, showing all the additional cars that will come in and out here and all the cars that are here now and how they're going to turn and all the rest of it. And it's been very helpful and, and our peer review who was just on the, with us. His data was all very helpful for cars. This has come up before and I'm just wondering, is it possible? I mean, this is an area designed for cars and we're adding 400 people who are going to live here year round. Do you guys ever do not just car traffic estimates, but how about pedestrian trips? How many people are going to be walking from this place to school or to out to Story Avenue? We keep hearing that one. Is it possible? Does the traffic control industry ever do pedestrian trips is my question? Could you do it here? Is that possible?
Yes, in fact, we did as a part of the transportation analysis. We've, we focused a lot to your point on vehicular traffic, but as a part of our assessment, we included estimates for pedestrian trips as well as transit trips, which in the case of this project, the transit trip is also a pedestrian trip as it relates to the crossing that we've been talking about. So we have provided those estimates as a part of our analysis and it's based on census data for residents that live in this area. And that's the best estimate that we can have as to what that might look like. Based on those estimates during the peak travel hours, we're predicting that there would be somewhere between 10 to 12 pedestrian slash transit trips that more than likely would be associated with this crossing.
You mentioned peak travel and I'm familiar with that, but I was really talking about more comprehensively, like how many kids are going to go to school? And how many kids are coming home in the afternoon and people going to the hospital down Low Street? All the different kinds of pedestrian trips, not just the rush hour. Do, do we have any data like that?
So over the, so over the course of the day, we're predicting that there would be somewhere around about 110 to 120 pedestrian slash transit trips.
And, okay, and that counts kids and adults and everybody.
Yeah, we, yeah, well, there, you probably would add, that would be adults because the number, the census numbers are based on adults that are, it doesn't, it doesn't include children that would be walking to school. It's probably, probably the simplest way to say that. So I would look at that as adults that would be walking, biking, or using transit over the course of the day.
Okay, maybe we've spent so much time talking about the traffic volumes that, that I haven't studied them as much, but I would like, I, I appreciate if, would it be possible to estimate? I mean, I don't have, how many people are going to live in this place? We, we've thrown around a 400 people number. Is that a reasonable number for us to be talking about? And how many children are there?
So I'd have to defer to another member of the team in terms of what those numbers look like demographically.
I see. All right, well, I don't know if it's possible, but it'd be nice to expand it to the children as well as the adults. So we have a sense of everybody's movements and are affected. But that's my last question. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Swan. Thank you, Mr. Dirk. Any further questions for Vanessa? Okay, Mr. Dirk, thank you. We may circle back with other questions. Okay, continuing with questions from the board. Anyone have any further questions? Yes, Mr. Agnew.
I had some questions for the architects, so first, if you could bring up the material board, pass it around, how it will help. But I, for the benefit of people who asked about what the maximum rent would be for one of the portable units, looking at the city of Boston has the same regulation because it's a state set regulation, which in turn is based on U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. The maximum, including utilities, that you could charge for a one bedroom, the household making 80% of area and median income would be $2,482 a month. Again, that includes utilities. For a two bedroom, it would be $2,978, including utilities. And I made, there are a few three bedroom units here. I can't remember how many are portable, but the maximum rent, including some utilities would be $3,441. Okay, so the first question I had was measurement of building height. I mean, just looking at the cross section, you know, taking across, taking across was the westerly wing of the building, so looking from the west, that's where the cross section was. Obviously, there's a big grade change on the parking lot of Shaw's and then down to Low Street. So I mean, long story short, it looks like it's four stories on the uphill side and four and a half roughly on the downhill side. So when you measure the height under our code, you, you have to do the entire perimeter. It's not based on the, of the way. Is that how you measure it?
It is, yeah. Yeah, we did measure the height according to the definition and the zoning code, and that's to the average grade determined by a calculation of all the entire perimeter, yes.
And what'd you get?
Fifty-five feet.
Fifty-five, okay. And then, and that excluded the parapet was just added in the last.
That's right, that measured to the average.
Okay, so how, given that mechanicals are going to be on a two foot podium probably, and then another three feet higher, that's five feet. That does not necessarily mean because of where pedestrians are, that with parapet, that's to five feet, but how much did you raise?
We, we use the approach, higher dollar approach there too. So at the, at the brick locations, we raised it to the full 42 inches. And at the cement board, we raised it to 36 inches. And then as Gian noted, we, we did a study, sideline study from these long vantage points. And that's sufficient to cut off the mechanical, because not only is it relatively low, we also positioned it into the center of the, of the roots. So it's, it's, the, the building itself does a fair amount of screening, but we needed that little bump with the parapet to seal the deal.
Okay, well, I, I asked if you'd be willing to send, you just send to us the lineup sites, so are you sure? Just to see your homework. And then that leads to the next question, which is we have another limitation on mechanical normally in the code, which is that it can only cover, if you're going to exclude it from height limit, Limitation on mechanical normally in the code, which is that it can only cover, if you're gonna exclude it from height limit. It can only cover the equivalent of ten percent of the ground floor area. Have you done that calculation?
No, we haven't. We, we can, um. But, um, yeah, thi- this equipment, as Gian noted also, is, um, pretty small in footprint, but it's a study we should do.
Yeah, if, if you could do that, I mean, because if you need an exception from a ten percent, we need to know that now. Also, because you've added the parapet, um, also on the low street side, I assume.
Yes.
And because as you heard, we heard from the landscape architect. There's in addition to the existing trees and. Um, and protecting. There's gonna be some screening at the mouth of the open spaces, the private space, the four yards. Could you please provide a, a new photo simulation? Because the one that you submitted. Probably three months ago is outdated. So straight on from across the street. The ones that you sent today are very helpful for either end and they show the parapet.
Yeah.
But please provide straight on.
Sure.
Okay. Then my, my last question. The photo simulations are invaluable to me anyway, um, so thank you for that. The more, the better. To understand context. But, uh, I know your, your firm has done quite a lot of multifamily and about this scale. You know, stick instruction. And so on. I just wonder if, you know, looking at your website. If there's a, a comparable project or two that's already built that you could direct the public to so that you can envision. Better what the finished product looks like. Is there anything? You don't have to know off the top of your head, but. Could you provide that and we could give that to the public?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Agman. Um, anything further? Yes.
You put that one on.
Yeah.
The sideline from the port plaza entry.
Yeah.
Just a quick question on, on this, this image. On the left-hand side, it, it, it looks. Sort of monolithic. Is that just sort of the limitations of the? The graphic and it, it would have more depth? With the, in the different, the different materials would signify different sorts of. Bump outs. And wouldn't, in real life, it would not be so flat as it appears here in this graphic.
Yeah, without, without question, yeah. I think it's the vantage point here. We're so far back from the building that you can't pick up that, that relief. But wherever there's a change in material. There especially may still need to panel. There's change in depth, among other elements that are in the building. Like today windows and, and, um, other features. So yes, when you're up close. Much more detail.
Okay. Yeah, it's hard to get a sense of that from this sort of.
I think the closer views are probably better.
Yeah, cuz the, but the closer views don't sort of give you the whole. Frontage, right? It gives you, your closer views that you provided gave us sort of that. Front look at the, at the entryway and the, the modified courtyard, but we don't really see that sort of left-hand side. Maybe, maybe we, we could see something like that. Is that doable?
It is.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other, um, questions, Mr. Swan?
I, I just had one. I mean, it's already come up that the tree warden had. Wants to make sure we save that. Really big row of Armstrong maple trees along Low Street. And he said in his comments, you wanna protect their roots. During construction. Would you be amenable to having some requirement to protect them, that, you know? Or would you outline, how are you gonna do that basically to protect the roots during construction?
Yeah, it'll be required. Yeah, I'm sorry. Our drawings will clearly note, um, the tree protection fence, uh, that surrounds the trees. The, um, the bear kind of around the trunk to protect the construction. Um, and then just monitoring the roots. And really just staying out of the drip line of the trees, which really are, so.
Okay, so that'll be on. Okay, thank you.
All right, um. Any other questions?
I have a question for Bowler.
Yes.
For the, uh. You, you, could you put up your second slide, the one that shows the, just the sidewalks?
Yeah, this one, the, the images of the sidewalks.
No, this is, I think this is the one, right?
Sorry, you want, you want the side, they want this one. You want this one, yeah, yeah.
Last week, I took a field trip. I went and parked my car over here. And I tried to walk the story avenue. I think you already mentioned. You can go up this way and it's great until you get to right there. And there's no sidewalk along the entry drive. So you gotta, gotta hop over a, a white fence. And I think you mentioned that you can't really make a proper connection to Story Avenue there because of handicap accessibility.
Right, the great.
But, I mean, so that. Isn't there something that can be done rather than having people? I mean, I don't see how I'm gonna get out there unless I either go up along. The road where peak cars are streaming in and out, or I hop over that white. Rail fence, fence in front of. The last tenant up there that you have on Port Plaza. I mean, it just seems like such a shame. You get so close. You have four hundred people here and you're trying to go to Story Avenue. You go all the way right there and you got a fence right in front of you. Is there some way to, to get out to the sidewalk in Story Avenue?
Yeah, I mean, we looked at, the easiest thing to do would be to add a sidewalk along that driveway, right? Right, but, but, but the grade is, the grade is too steep to be able to fly in. I mean, there's multiple sidewalks.
You can't add a sidewalk unless it's handicapped and blind, so what is? I mean. I used to push around a relative in a wheelchair for years, so nothing against that, but to have everybody. There's really no way to get there. Try to go this way. You go all the way up there and you wind up in the corner of Market Baskets parking lot, this huge parking lot with no sidewalk. You try to go this way and you walk. You walk up Low Street and try to go that way. And you do have sidewalks along Port Plaza, but then there aren't any sidewalks. You're walking across parking lots and dangerous areas. It just seems such a shame. You've got all the way so close to Story Avenue, you have no way. To get to Story Avenue without walking down the street. And it's just, I don't know, it's just. Seems like a shame to put four hundred people in a park that was designed for cars. Now you're adding pedestrians, residents. And they have no way to get out to Story Avenue. We talked a lot about that bus. And you've been great to provide a way to get across the street with a hock light and things. To the bus. On Low Street. That's the bus that, um. One of our buses, but there's a bus on Story Avenue that's like fourteen times a day rather than six times a day. It's a much more. Frequent bus and there's no way to get to Story Avenue. It's safe. And it's just, it. It just, maybe you could look at it again. I don't know what the solution is, but. But to not be able to get out to Story Avenue, hopping over a white fence. Which is quite doable for most people to go over that little fence. But I don't know, it just seems like. Why, it seems like a, an odd design. So I just. Maybe you can't do it, but I appreciate if you look into it and try. Thank you.
So can I follow up on that? So is what you're saying basically, like you can never have a sidewalk where there's a hill? Because it wouldn't be ADA compliant?
Yeah, I think you would need a, a variance from the Massachusetts A V. Architectural Access Board in order to put in a non-compliant ADA sidewalk.
So anywhere in, in Massachusetts where there's a hill in a, in a, uh. Commercial setting, you would need to, to get a variance from the architectural.
I believe on, on private property.
On private property, yeah.
It might be, I'm not sure what happened with public.
Yeah, yeah, we're talking about private property, understood. Yeah, okay, that's, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, actually, before you go, uh, can I just dovetail on Mr. Delaw and Mr. Swan's question? I, I'm intrigued by this and I'm also concerned as well and I. Is there an alternative that's, that's workable whereby it's perhaps not a sidewalk, but some sort of protected? You know, um. Painted corridor for pedestrian use, though I, I don't know what the limitations are of encouraging. You know, use by both, um. You know, by, by anyone who might need it by whatever mobility, they might, um, need to move. Through this space, but. Kind of painted bike lane, is there some way to? To prescribe a way by which folks can expect to get. From this area of activation to Story Avenue or Low Street. And not be so sort of shackled by the fact that we might not be able to do a sidewalk for reasons that we can't change, it sounds like. But is there another solution? Do you, do you know if that would be?
You mean like a, almost like a, like a path, a pathway?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, honestly, like we see this, th- there's plenty of precedent that we see all the time. We, we see. You know, we see an entire prescribed bike lane, uh, on places like High Street, which is simply just. Boreded off by paint. Um, and language and sort of, uh, you know. An unspoken agreement by between each, e- each other and ourselves that we will abide by. Though many probably don't, but at least having some sense of where folks are encouraged to walk and not walk. Because I think the reality is that while this exists well in, and maybe people have heard me probably say this before, so I apologize. But if it, if it, if it, if it exists well in probes, that is to say it's on paper and it works. But doesn't function well in practice. I think that's a, a, a net loss. So we should fast forward through the, hey, it works on paper, but what about like how people will behave? The reality is that people are encouraged to go where they're encouraged to go. And just because we don't have a sidewalk, can we do something else that says, hey, this is where you go? Because. Human nature being human nature and those that need to get from A to B are gonna go from A to B and they're just gonna walk. You know, as, as like the, the sun and gravity and their will will take them and they'll just go. And they'll cross through all sorts of stuff. And I just think. Are we not, um, you know, we're, we're looking at a, a problem and pretending I suspect that we may not see it. I, I, I think that I've shared in the sentiment, I, I see it as a potential problem. You know, I see other issues that I know we're all trying to resolve, but this is one that just screams out. You know, danger, right? Folks are gonna be walking around where cars are moving routinely with no idea of like how to really get through and. I don't think they're gonna be consoled by the fact that we say. Well, we tried to get you a sidewalk, but we just couldn't. Godspeed, you know, and, and I think, and no discourtesy, I don't mean to sound. Flippant in that, but it, it is truly like. Curious if, if it weighs on the minds of my colleagues, I suspect it does. Is there a way that we can try to solve?
Take another look. I, I don't know the answer.
I, I know, and I'm not looking for an answer, but I'm looking for, um, and, and thank you for that. I'm, I'm interested in a sort of. A willingness to look at that more closely because. I think that that could be helpful. Yeah, yes, Mr. Swan.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Google Maps, here's the Verizon store. That's a little white fence you gotta get over. Maybe you could just put a couple steps for people to go up there and open the fence so you can just get to the sidewalk. I mean, because people are gonna do it anyway. They're gonna. Probably walk around the edge as shown in, in the picture here. But I mean, it's. You're so close, you got people right to the edge. They just need to go up a few steps and go through the white fence.
Okay, um, I appreciate that and, and I, I think that it may, I may have sponsored additional. You probably, uh, or questions. Mr. Agman.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Bowler on, on drainage, but before, before I do that, um, if you go to, if, if Andy Corb would go to the site plan. Three dash, I'm sorry.
Is this in the plan set?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So pedestrian crosswalk improvement plan P dash one oh one, I think it's. One of the first couple of slides that they submitted recently. Yeah, and if you zoom in, zoom in on.
Yes.
Area that.
Sorry, is it this sheet? Is it this sheet? Yeah, yeah.
Zoom in on the, the corner right at. Story Avenue. Where the driveway is, right there. So. I believe what Mr. Swan is saying. Would require, uh, eliminating some parking there. Do I have that right? So basically where the, where the pink crosswalk is. That's as far as you can get right now.
Right.
And then there's a grade change. So physically, physically to, to get up that, you need either steps or a ramp. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. Am I correct? That would require eliminating parking spaces.
I believe the board, yes.
Okay, so that, that I think is the issue, right?
The parking space?
So physically it can be done. But that's what I understand.
Right, well, hopefully there'd be those reciprocal easements and things we've been talking about. It's one parking space.
I think it's more than one parking space. Maybe two.
Okay, um, now on the drainage. Again, originally, uh, the application called for, um, waivers from our stormwater ordinance and regulations.
Sure.
So I'm just trying to clarify because it. It seems like although. By going through the comprehensive permit with us, you could do a one-stop shop and get whatever permit. But. My understanding is that you're needing all of the regulations, what you told us, because the. The total flow is actually down versus the existing condition.
So we're meeting the, this, and I can tell you that we're definitely meeting the state, Mast E P's stormwater standard for the developments.
Yeah.
Um, I guess.
If, if I understand this correctly, I think it's the request, there's not. That it would not need to go to the city engineer for review, rather it would just be handled here by the board, but it would still comply with the same set of regulations, right? That's what we're talking about.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to confirm. All right, so there are no, there are no waivers from the regulations except having to get stormwater from there.
The application to the, to the staff essentially itself, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then the other question, the city engineer, uh, John Eric White. In his letter. Said that his understanding is that the, the actual. Election by Maine, whatever you wanna call it, in Low Street is owned by the city. But he's not aware of any. Property law. That allows anybody to use it, to plug into it. So I'm just trying to understand, and maybe it's a question for attorney need. Uh, I know that's the existing condition, but. What is the legal basis of that? I mean, for example. Why, why couldn't you infiltrate all the stormwater on your own site and not use city pipe?
So there's an easement that, that exists there today?
No, there, that's the point. There is no easement. So I'm trying to understand. You know, in, in, in dealing with the, managing the stormwater at your site. A proposal is to plug into the line in the Low Street.
So, Mr. Agman, they already, it already attaches to the line in Low Street, just like. Um, m- many, if not all. Private property commercial developments tie into the city stormwater system without an easement.
I, I, I understand that. By what right?
By what right does everybody do that?
Yeah.
Um, I'll have to look how it is. I think it's standard practice throughout the Commonwealth. How private developers to deal with stormwater tie into the system in the municipal system, which addresses it. I'm, I'm happy to do the research for you, but this is not a unique situation, as you know.
I, I, I know it's not unique, but I don't understand the, the legal. Requirement that the city permit that rather than infiltration on site. That's what I don't understand. It's a question. I don't get it.
Okay, so I, I can look at the general answer for you, but certainly currently. And the stormwater, uh, policy presumes that as well because they talk about. Where you connect the design point of the overall stormwater system for the municipality, right? So. It's presumed that you're gonna connect to a design point for the municipality because. Most places, commercial developments can't take care of all of their stormwater on site.
I, I understand that's a practice, of course. I'm trying to understand.
Well, the size of the system, well, we can talk about the size of a system that would have to be constructed. In any development like this or any other commercial development to retain stormwater. On site would be immense.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. Probably would be unfeasible. I'm, I'm not suggesting the shit. I'm just trying to understand why. The city engineer said. He's not aware of any legal right. Uh, for. Any of the existing users, the, a right. To plug into the city stormwater system. He raised a question. I did.
Yeah.
And, and property?
I understand for a moment. I, I think if I'm hearing correctly, because this is maybe my question as well. This is a question about. Whether or not this is a right versus a privilege. A municipal, a, a, a right by which any resident. Private. A municipal, a, a, a right by which any resident, private individual or. Corporate and larger and, and commercial has a right to plug in to the municipal, um, stormwater. Uh, system.
Right.
Versus a privilege. Uh, and I think our city engineer, Mr. Uh, John Eric White, has said that he's just not aware of the right. It's, it's, I think it's generally accepted that this is a custom and practice. The question is perhaps a forgiving, a loiterous question, dare I say, in a room filled with many of us, but. Um, isn't a right versus a privilege, and I think it's so that the board can understand, is it something we must do or something we may? And, and I don't mean to put words into Mr. Iver's mouth, but that's, that's basically what I.
Well, I think the answer is something that you must do, and I'm happy to find the genesis of it, but it would be. It would be similar to, you know, if the, if the city infrastructure passes by your project, you're allowed to use it, right? So if the city storm, if the city sewer system passes by your project, you're allowed to use it. Now, many municipalities, as a result of the changes in EMS four permits, are now starting to charge. Stormwater fees, right, just like, just like they charge sewer fees and water fees, right? Because it's municipal storm, it's a municipal facility. And so you must let us use it because it passes in front of our property, just like any other commercial property.
But you, but you, but you, you are not obligated, the you being the city, you're not obligated to do so for free.
Well, no, but right now the city doesn't have a. You have to.
Not, but unlike, unlike water sewer.
Right, right. And charge a fee, so you have to have an ordinance, you have to have a stormwater ordinance, it has to have a fee structure, and it has to be applied equitably to everybody.
Which, which would make it analogous and parallel to what we all know in water sewer.
Right.
Treatment, uh, for every resident and.
Right, so similarly, we have the state stormwater policy, which we now must comply with, right? And that has changed along with the MS four permit for every municipality in Massachusetts over the last twenty years, right? And similarly, it used to be that you could just, if you were in the industrial park, you could just dump all of your septic. Into the sewer system regardless what was in it, and then we all adopted, um, primary premium pre-treatment requirements, right? Because nobody wanted to dump all that stuff in the river or wherever else you were dumping your sewer. And so the cities and towns in Massachusetts adopted pre-treatment requirements. So that the effluent didn't have to be treated at the cost of all of the taxpayers. But the person who was causing that effluent to be more expensive to be treated had to pay. But you have to adopt a system that is treats everybody fairly. So this is a municipal infrastructure that passes by this property, just like it passes by. Any other property in Newburyport or anyplace else that has a stormwater system, and you're allowed to connect to.
I think the paradigm is like a sewer connection.
Correct, that's how, that's how it's usually done with sewer.
Right.
Whether that's what the stormwater and, and.
Okay, alright, I'll, I'll cut this short, this is probably something, um, uh, Garrett, that I'm gonna ask you to give us a memo on.
Sure.
And, uh, just because I have had a recent experience with the city in, in, uh, Massachusetts where. Uh, the city engineer there purported to have the ability to deny a connection specifically to stormwater. And require, uh, infiltration on site. I didn't understand where they were coming from, but I, I understand the logic when I'm hearing here. Um.
Well, I, I don't.
I think like, if you add like waste, private waste, we're not like, uh, so waste logging the plant and the capacity issues. And, and somebody use permit, then sometimes a, a city does something.
That's enough, we'll, we'll take it offline. I, I just want, I just need to understand this because we have the issue of the existing downfall pipe. That has existing problems, not caused by this project. That's why I'm asking. So I, here's a method that might map this, so thank. Um, that's all I have.
Okay, um, any further, uh, questions from the board on anything that we've heard thus far this evening? Yes.
I, I just have a, a question for attorney need. Attorney need, I, I just want you to help me make sure I understand correctly. So I, I, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the parking. Okay, so as I understand it, the project proposes two hundred and sixty-one spaces. Is that, that's what I found in your presentation?
One, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you calculated that for the project, you or your team calculated that. Looking at the smart growth zoning district requirements, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Our goal was to, I don't know, it's, again, I don't have the exact number because I don't have our breakdown in front of me, but the goal was to get as close to the smart growth. Requirements as we can.
Okay, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, uh. Do you meet the smart growth zoning district requirements? Are you asking us for a waiver?
We are.
Because you kind of, you used very artful language in answering this earlier and it prompted my curiosity about it, so I'm not trying to, I just wanna know.
Yeah, so our ratio is overall is one point two three.
I see that, yes.
Um, and so I, I will get you the breakdown of the, and I was doing this back, because the question was asked earlier. I didn't have our calculations in front of us, and so I was pulling it together to be able to address the number of parking spaces we provided. But we do have a breakdown of the number of one-bedroom units, the number of two-bedroom units, the number of three-bedroom units.
Right.
So we will apply those ratios and give you the exact number. The reason we asked for the waivers is because we're not in the smart growth district.
Right, right.
So that's why we asked for the waiver.
I understand, right. Right, so I guess my question would be. If this project, let's put aside this being a forty B project.
Sure.
So what? Re- parking requirements would our zoning ordinance mandate with respect for a project of this size?
In this district.
Yes.
In this shopping center district.
Yes.
It wouldn't because you can't build.
Okay.
Family in the shopping center.
Okay, thank you for that, alright, so. We default to the smart growth zoning district.
That's what, right, that's what we did, because it's the most reasonable comparison.
Okay, but I take it they're probably, well, you tell me. Uh, uh, this structure could be built in other areas of the city. For the smart growth zoning district would not apply, but another. It would be in another district, and there might be a different calculation for parking. My question clear?
Uh, I, well, so yes, no, so this, this project. Could only, the closest would be the smart growth district. This, that, that would be the only place in the city that this project could possibly be built. But it doesn't meet all of those requirements.
I understand, so when you say it would be the closest, meaning, uh, e- expand on that, meaning it's, there's no other place in the city. Where a project of this size would be constructed except for in the, in an area designated smart growth district.
That's correct, the city doesn't allow it in their zone.
Okay, so. Certainly you can't build it in the shopping center district, let's say, that's what you've told me. So we have to look at the best analog to calculate parking.
Correct.
And that best analog is the smart growth district.
Correct. Multi-family structure.
Okay, and there are no other districts that would permit such a large project. Within the city zoning ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the only, the only place would be the R three district, which is downtown.
Okay. Okay, well, okay. So.
There's, there's not enough area.
I got you, I got you.
Uh, through the chair, just to put Greg out of his misery. Buller actually gave the numbers. If, if you were doing the vanilla parking requirement for the rest of the city, would be three hundred and nineteen spaces. The C N, so that's.
So if you were to build this in the R three district, it'd be three hundred and nineteen space.
You're right.
Okay.
Right.
Gotcha.
Thanks, Mr. Iver.
Okay. Uh, so.
Please continue.
Okay, that's, I think that's helped me, so. Uh, the R three district would permit such a construction, the parking would be three hundred and some spots. We're defaulting, or, or the applicant that asks us to default to the smart growth zoning district, get two sixty-one or whatever, right, calculates up to.
Right.
And there's no location within the R three zone within the city where such a project could be constructed, is that what you told me?
Correct, not given the, um, requirements of the number of units per square footy and the number of units in one building.
Okay, well, yeah, so I, I look at the smart growth zoning numbers, which. I mean, city council approved them, so. You indicate the proposal is for one point two three units per parking spot per unit.
Correct.
And that's called here, on average, right, one per one bedroom, one point three per two bedroom, and one point five per three bedroom.
Correct, that's correct.
To acknowledge, when did the city council adopt the smart growth zoning district?
Um, I'm gonna defer to, uh, Mr. Ackerman.
Fifteen or so?
Five years ago?
Ten years ago.
Ten years.
Yeah, fifteen, I think, yeah.
High wise.
I think you've got, thank you very much.
Thank you, Spinning, uh, Mr. Swan.
I just have a follow-up while you're on the subject. One, one of the members of the public asked a pretty blunt question, are you gonna tell people they can't have another car? I mean, I think I know the answer, but could you just?
So there's the X number of parking space, so first of all, the bu- the building manager owner will do the management of the parking spaces. But typically, you know, when you get your unit, you know how many spaces you're gonna get, and that's how many, that's it.
Oh, I see, right, so you'll give him, give him up that way.
Correct.
So essentially, you might tell somebody they can't have another car if they already have this number for their unit. My, my other question is, I live on a small street with twenty houses in Newburyport. But every day, every time you look out, there's probably an Amazon truck or a, or a, you know. UPS truck or whatever.
Right.
And I, this, this building has ten times as many units as my little street. So I guess my question is, where are all these trucks gonna pull up? If there's like, on any given time, there's three of them on site, there might be one in that little circle, but then where are the other two?
Well, I think that, so I'm gonna let, um, Randy address that because we did provide a, a swipe, a swept analysis for that. And more than one can fit in there, um, but I'm gonna let Randy, uh, Randy address it because it's been redesigned a little bit.
Yeah, I, I just think it's a nice place, if I'm the first one, I can take you get in there, but I'm not sure I'm gonna get parked in if I'm a delivery truck. So that's kinda what I'm wondering.
I, I will, so I'll let Randy address that, but there's a pretty big parking area out there also that if it's full. That an Amazon truck or FedEx truck or something.
They just park at Shaw's or something, sure.
Right.
Okay.
They don't have to go to lotion.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, there's a, there's a question, you wonder how many, how many.
Just wondering if there's four delivery trucks i- in, in one, at one time, where does the third and fourth one park?
I think, I think they'll, they'll, they'll need to go to the next available space outside of that drop-off parking.
Which is that, is that in your area or is that in the, like, Shaw's?
I, I think it would be in, in our area, there's, there's some headed parking spaces. Outside, uh, uh, along the side of the building, I can, I can hear all of those spaces.
Yeah, they're kinda small, and these trucks are big. So I'm just, I can't imagine them trying to get into one of those spaces.
Yeah, I mean, but I, 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 I would just say that some of those drop-off vehicles are pretty small, um.
Some are small, but it's amazing how many aren't gonna fit in a single parking space. Anyway, it's just a question I have, I don't know if you could think about it, but it just. If my little street, there's usually somebody delivering something, I gotta believe with two hundred units, there should be a plan for it.
Yeah, and, and I know there, Eric, there's an area in the back too, where there's the twenty-three surface parking spaces that's intended for you to buy.
So that's, so people would be dropping packages in the back there? Does each of these units have a little box? I mean, how do, I don't understand, or does the UPS guy run up to the fifth floor and drop something? Where does this stuff all go?
Church Catholic, three anyone in Main Street, you can answer the question. You have one or two, let's say you have four or five delivery trucks at the same time, they'll come into the circle, they'll call some members, head in parking. In front, they'll park there, or they will park in the parking lot, or they will park in the back, that's a service, there is a service entrance, so go in. And to the service entrance with the.
And you can drop packages there for.
Not in that, you have to go into, so if they can park there, then.
And take them in somehow. But do they have to go like up to the fifth?
Yeah, there's a nail bar.
Right, I see, alright, it's just.
I mean, there's plenty of access.
We just never thought for.
Parking, plenty of access.
This world we live in, there's so many delivery vans, and some of them are big. I appreciate you, uh.
There're plenty of parking for, uh.
But if they wind up parking, not in the easement, but on what is, I guess, your land, your Port Plaza, the owner of Port Plaza.
Yeah, that is temporary parking, that's not fun.
It's, it's just temporary?
Yeah.
Okay, because I can imagine them pulling up there for some of these large trucks. Right, and they usually only stop for ten minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Alright, uh, yes, Mr. Bennet.
Uh, is, may I ask Mr. Kaplan a question? Would that be alright?
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Kaplan, and I appreciate your, your application. I do, it's a, it's a positive for the city. Uh, hopefully we get through this, we'll see where this all takes us. I just have one question. There's been a lot of discussion about the size, and I know our jurisdictions circumscribe to a certain extent regarding that. Any concerns we have has to be related to a legitimate concern that the community has regarding health, safety, welfare, life. Uh, and we're probing that, you know, traffic and stormwater and those issues, which we've beat to death actually. But I wanted to ask you, uh. Your thinking regarding the absorption rate for a project of this size? And how, how have you perceived that, and have you given that some thought? I suspect you did, you're a competent developer. Could you comment on that?
Sure. I think a lot of us have seen. And I'm a poor guy, but I think a lot of us have seen, if you travel around Boston, if you travel around this country. It is the worst, in my opinion, in architecture you can see, where you see these apartment buildings that are just a flat lining of ugly. You know, there's no thought given to them, and that I hate them, I can't stand them, and that, I would never allow that. Being in Port Plaza, and that's why I wanted to put the U-shaped driveway in, I wanted the different materials and the brick. Because, I mean, people make fun of Port Plaza, when my father bought it, it was a C pavement in nineteen seventy-four. I was laughed at, I think I said this before, when I wanted to plant trees and plantings. And put kind, you know, put barriers, everybody thought that was ridiculous, you can't do anything today without doing that. I'm very conscious about architecture, very conscious about how it looks and how it's going to work. The U-shaped driveway.
Excuse, excuse me, ma- maybe my question wasn't clear, I.
Well, I mean, it's the density, I mean.
Well, no, 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 the, the rate of absorption of the sale of those units in the community, that's the question I'm asking. Not the architecture or those types of issue, and I take it you've given that some thought, I mean. It, it does the community no good to have a two hundred unit elegantly designed, uh, complex. And there's no, there's no thought given to it, it's the absorption of those units into the community.
I mean, my understanding that there is man, um, that units owned by Minko down the street. Are in demand, and our, you know, analysis of the marketplace. Um, we've had potential developers contact us, many men who have wanted to be here for years. And who think that the market is excellent for, you know, Newburyport because of transit, the, uh, location. Proximity to Boston, the historic nature of it, it's nice and north of the city. I think, uh, yeah, we're not worried about the absorption of it.
Just so we conclude this, I appreciate that, so.
Sure.
I mean. Your conclusion in that regard is based more kind of on anecdotal information, your, your skills of a, as a developer, your. Information you've perceived and received, uh, did you have, did you do undertake any analytical analysis or? Look at absorption rates in the city, I, I'm just curious about that.
Well. We will probably be partnering with a developer.
Okay.
Do this, because we, we developed apartments in Connecticut, and we had them for forty or fifty years. We recently sold them a few years ago, but we're doing shows, uh, in this project, uh, we'll probably be partnering with a developer. Who, uh, does this all the time, that's not, you know, you don't build all the time apartments, so we could do that again. But I'm getting older, and I think it's more appropriate to partner with a developer, who's done this, and many developers have done their studies. We've done this, and many developers have done their studies, and they're very eager to do this, which tells us that this is, no one wants to build for vacancies. So that's, that's your point.
Right.
And I, you know, and we wouldn't be getting interest from all of these people across the United States to build this, and we're controlling what's getting built, uh, unless they felt that, uh, vacancy rate can compare to both, and the demand is very high.
Okay.
Because I assume there'll be more people into the area than I can now.
I, I just, this is a major project with significant costs, I assume some analysis was undertaken to make sure it's gonna be a success, and that's what I'm asking you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bennet, thank you, and Mr. Kaplan, thank you. Further questions from the board on anything that we've talked about this evening or any previous evening, honestly? I'm going to, uh, pause then questions from the board and go back to public comment before we continue. I want to begin public comment this round with online, because I see a hand that's raised online, Mr., it looks like, um, an Owen Smith, um, Owen Smith, if you can hear us, if you can kindly unmute your mic, uh, we'll do the same, and, uh, we're happy to hear.
Yeah, uh, good evening, Owen Smith, one seventy-five, uh, Story Avenue. Kind of wanna address two things, uh, first. The developers are the applicant's statement about the, uh, impossibility of building a ADA sidewalk at, uh, Story Avenue. I looked at the CMR, and it says for sidewalks along public ways, you're, um, you only require, it, it's only required to be, uh, five percent. Otherwise, it could be considered a slope walkway, so I don't understand why, uh, that's not possible, is it cost? Or is it convenience? But I figured that it might be prudent to have the peer reviewer look at that claim, because I don't believe it. Uh, we have sidewalks all over the city at steeper grades than five percent, and there's a carve out in the C, uh, CMR covering that. And then, um, secondly, uh, just to address some of the pedestrian circulation and transit use, it was mentioned earlier that, you know, uh, transit and pedestrian trips would count as one because the buses would be on Low Street. So it sounds like that's gonna, this project will cause a, uh, major pedestrian circulation change on Low Street related to transit buses, which can cause backup, so, would it be prudent to introduce bus pull offs for school buses? And for, uh, transit buses to minimize traffic queuing when they're picking up, uh, their passengers? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Smith, uh, I'm gonna take a point of, uh, personal privilege as chair and ask, uh, if we could ask the applicant attorney me, Mr. Smith had just raised a point that I think it's worthy of us addressing regarding the CMRs insofar as the, uh, we'll say the accessibility compliance requirement on five or plus grade percent, or, or five or plus, uh, percent grade, and the ability to install a sidewalk, do you, do you want to address that?
No, because I haven't read the CMRs recently, and obviously Mr. Smith has, so, uh, I think that the earlier response is, we'll relook at it and get back to it.
Fair, I just, if it was something that you had, um, some calculus on, I wanted.
I can wax on about public access to infrastructure, but not about the CMR.
We'll, uh, we're.
Fair approach.
We'll try to resist all the waxing, uh, this evening that we can, and, uh, but I appreciate that, I just wanted to make sure that we took a moment, uh, and tried to unpack it if we could. Continuing, uh, with public comment, I see no further hints online, I wanna go back out of the room. My immediate right, um. Yes, sir, um, up front, yes, thank you.
I have Rick Taylor from Connecticut District, you can definitely.
Oh, can you turn it on for?
There you go, Mr. Taylor, you have it.
Thank you, I, I just, uh, going back, continuing with this, uh, question about the access to Story Avenue, um, I think, I think it's very important to try to do this, and one suggestion I would make, just to throw out there, is to consider a series of uh, switchbacks that are connected by short, short flights of stairs. So that would give you the, uh, the grade you need to meet the ADA requirement, but also a short route for those who don't need that. And the example I would use is the series of switchbacks and stairs that connect the corner of Summit Street to the middle school. Uh, that, that accomplishes the ADA requirement, but also gives a straight access for those who don't need the ADA requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, um. Any further comments in the room? Yes, Tom?
I'm, I'm sorry if I don't stand, I.
No, 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 quite all right, if you could just project, um.
I'll do the best I can.
Yeah, and, and please feel free to stay seated if you would.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to say, the building is absolutely beautiful, the site plans are beautiful, everything is wonderful. And when I saw the courtyard with that gorgeous pool, I'm going to leave here tonight with an application for housing. Secondly, I think this project is way too massive. Absolutely, after hearing all the comments and knowing the area intimately, it is way too big for this area. This is a beautiful project, I don't know anything about building, but I'm probably five, ten, twenty, thirty meters, wherever. I think you have to take very, very serious with them, I know they're jokes, but I'm gonna say it anyway, what these citizens have said, knowing the area, they shot there, they walked it, they tried to walk it. They, they shot there, they said, and one thing I didn't mention earlier, the number of kids that have increased unbelievably over the last two years, riding bicycles, riding bicycles, four, five, six, seven, together at a time, every day, every day, through the plaza, through the shopping center, through that whole area. I, I didn't even think of it until I heard other people talking about other things going on. I, I cannot believe that Newport will, will put this project of this size on Low Street with access into Low Street and all the, all of the these people have talked about. I find this inconceivable, as gorgeous as it is. And as I said, when I saw that courtyard with the pool, I'm in, but other than that, please build it somewhere else, please.
Thank you, Mr. Brogan. Any, uh, further comments in the room? Yes, and then, uh, I'll flip over to the side. Yes, if you don't mind, uh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary July, thirty-three Elmira Ave, I don't know if you could indulge in just a picture of the, of the parking lot, uh, with the walkway.
Uh, sorry, which?
The park, the, uh, the walk, the sidewalk that we're talking about.
Oh, sorry, up to Story Ave, yeah, sorry, yeah, uh, sorry.
The, the, uh, design here looks like it's taking the sidewalk, um, and trying to, uh, keep it along, like you go to that left side, trying to tuck it along the buildings, um, and then when you go in front of that building where the blue is adjacent to that, that crosswalk, um, that's where your issue is when you, when it comes to ADA accessibility, if I understand correctly. And so I'm curious why there isn't consideration to just bring that green line, take that green line, then you jog it to the right and then go straight up, right exactly where Andy just dragged them out, and go up that area. I would imagine we have that same issue, but it seems to make no sense for how you would actually, I understand, bringing by the buildings, it's gonna go towards to the store, but is there a consideration potentially bringing that straight up along that roadway? Even if it needs, as Mr. Tracy, one of the people spoke around here, talks about potentially eliminating one of those two inbound lanes.
Very good, thank you. Actually, uh, if I could, we have one comment here, and then I'll, uh, I'll, I'll come to you to come to it.
Be brief, um, Kate Gibbs for Beacon Street. I've been on Beacon Street for twenty-five years, I've never seen it that bad as it is now. I love the sidewalk on Beacon Street, it's going back and forth all day long, it's a neighborhood now. Do I dare to walk to Shaw's? No, I'd like, that's all I have to say, I agree with this man, thank you.
I, I don't think that. Very good. Uh, Chief McCauley, uh, twenty-seventh Storywork Drive, also the Newport City Council. I'd like to comment on the ongoing plan, similar to others, I'm not sure that the applicant has adequately addressed traffic impacts. There's been much focus on, uh, Low Street and the central driveway, but frankly, uh, this could be a bit of a distraction, uh, when the light is needed, is, is maybe missing a point. Point I'm making is that traffic impacts are probably about a third of the issues here that's, uh, in the impact. We've projected, all of us, many things here in this, uh, on this developer, that it's gonna be walkable, it's gonna be bike friendly, but it's not, we realize that. Uh, if you're a pedestrian, there's no way to safely exit Story, uh, to Story Ave. Or if you're a biker, there's no way to safely exit onto Low Street. The traffic light in question was as much to allow the residents to leave the compound as it is to, uh, impact the traffic flow going forward. The peer architect, um, that we had called this project transformative to the area, and I agree with that, I think we all should. He called for an expansive street skate, um, uh, to soften the blending of the roadway into the residency that's there. In effect, create a buffer using a mini pedestrian wall, uh, if you will, benches and trees. Uh, but, uh, the applicant in his, uh, filing today, uh, that's posted, uh, said no, that they weren't gonna pursue that. Uh, if I lived there in that compound, uh, and I had a family, and let's say I had two kids, and I wanted to teach my kid how to ride a bike, uh, what are my options? One, I could take him to the parking lot and let him ride his bike in the parking lot under supervision, or two, I could pack him up in a car and drive him to one of the great parks that we have, to be able to do that, again, that's not counted. Or for those who like multimodal, I could, uh, put him on bus with me and, and bike, and, uh, take him to the park as well. The issue is, the bus doesn't run, uh, at night, it doesn't run after hours, it doesn't run on Sundays. So in a way, we're generating more traffic volume to the points that were made, that this is a, uh, car-centric environment, and we're putting people. And I think that's the two thirds of the issue, is that what are these people gonna do for the other, uh, twelve hours that they're not busy working, et cetera, along the way, when they're recreating? And trying to recreate, they're in a, they're in a, they're in a parking lot. And so, uh, the things that we, we, that I'm gonna suggest that are must haves, is there needs to be a sidewalk connection from low to story. The bus stop needs to be at the front of the building, next to Shaw's. Uh, because we don't have another bus, we only have one that comes down Story Ave, and it goes to Market Basket. And it should come in the entrance, to Port Plaza, go to Shaw's, go through the cut through, go to Market Basket, and continue on its way. We don't have a bus that goes down Low Street right now, uh, that we're trying to create this bus stop. Um, and I don't, based upon our current ridership, I don't think we're gonna get another bus. Um, so, and we, the gathering space on Low Street, uh, really, uh, the transformative, based upon our peer reviewer, I, I, I think it's a real, it is a real must have, and I think that, uh, we need to start working to compromise on that. Uh, because, um, that's part of the safety issues that you heard previously with some of the residents that are there, that, uh, we can still keep the trees, but we've gotta, uh, potentially move the, uh, that, that buffer zone off the right of way, seventy-five feet, fifty feet. And what does that do that impacts the size of footprint of the building, right? So I can understand pushback that's going on in that. And the road, road improvements, we probably need a left-hand turn lane or nothing else at a minimum. Uh, as I said, the light is really to let the people out of the, out of the compound, as opposed to trying to regulate the traffic. Uh, thank you very much, Steve, Tom.
Thank you, counselor. Further comments in the room? Yes, sir?
I spoke before, oh, of course, yes.
Um, do you wish to use the microphone to bring this up?
No, I can bring it as best.
You can say where you are.
I first, I genuinely appreciate the efforts that this board is putting into examination of the detail. Uh, they are important, they're critical for your decision. Uh, you're obviously looking at pedestrian access traffic, the materials used in the building, and the cost to the city. But I want to ask this board to change your focus from the details to a broader question. Perhaps you've heard the expression, person cannot necessarily see the forest, we're looking at trees. I want you to move away from the trees and look at, what value does this project add to the city? How does the character, the life, and the appearance of our city get enhanced by this project? I think the developers have done an excellent job of deciding, I know it would be adjacent to a shopping center that you would see as you approach downtown Lawrence or downtown Lowell, not downtown Newport. And certainly not as a part of a gateway to our city. I think that it would be much better for the city to encourage retail outlets to occupy the space of the existing Kmart building. Or to simply renovate the existing building with whatever number of units could fit in there to provide low-cost or affordable housing. I see the project as it is designed, as, uh, first, a building with absolutely no respect for the historical character, colonial character of the buildings that it had. I see the scale as far too large. And I see that it seems to be designed so that the developers and or owner of the building will enhance their revenue opportunities significantly. Uh, if you consider the combination of size of the units and number of units that would be in the building, if you say that, uh, approximately two thousand dollars will be the monthly charge for renting an apartment in that building, and there are two hundred units, the developers will be generating four hundred thousand dollars a month in income for themselves. Now, yes, they have to pay taxes, uh, yes, they have to pay fees, but I don't think that that means they cannot afford to pay for the effluent and the sewage that is associated. Recently pointed out that the city has existing sewers in that area. And therefore, the city should be obligated to assume those expenses. And the city and the people of Newport should be obligated to assume the expenses of whatever road improvements and traffic lights have to be installed. It seems to me that the developers want to take advantage of existing zoning requirements so that they can reduce their developmental costs and increase their margins. Now, if this building, as I said, was going to be located on the outskirts of Lawrence and Lowell, I would give it my full support. It looks like that, it would fit in and it would run in those areas, for yourself. However, we can see there are many problems with this location. Not the least of which is the appearance of the building and the scale, but all of the other issues that have been addressed by everyone here tonight. I encourage this board to reject this solution to a non-existent problem. I encourage this board to look at a lower scale, smaller scale solution to the vacant property that Kmart used to sell.
Very good. Yes, good.
I just wanted to make a quick factual statement about in the. Best job, one forty-four Low Street.
Sorry.
Um, quick point of fact about the Liva bus routes, the number eleven express bus from Lawrence comes directly down one thirteen, stops at Story Ave and Low Street, and continues down Low Street. So there is in fact a bus that comes that way, it is, because it is an express bus, does not make any sense for it to turn into Shaw's, and when you go past Market Basket, that is not the route that this bus takes. While I'm here speaking about the Miva routes, I also don't think that current ridership is necessarily the benchmark that we would be thinking about when this building goes into place. It's very reasonable to expect that as Miva, you know, looks at their routes, that they would want to expand this service. And one of the things that makes this project worthwhile in this spot is because we have that transit. Encouraging people to use transit reduces the traffic, it doesn't bump it up. So, I personally am looking forward to making this as friendly for Miva buses, whether they're full-size, whether they're mini-Mivas, as friendly as we can. They can find tracks on them so people can get their kids to other places to run.
Thank you very much. Further comments in the room?
Could I just thank this gentleman that spoke before this lady? He was so eloquent, but I'd just like to make, I think, one correction. The affordable rentals, if I heard correctly, were somewhere between, around twenty-five hundred dollars a month. The affordable rentals, not the other seventy percent, which I'm sure will be in the three, four, and five thousand dollar a month range. And if I'm wrong, the developers can tell me right now that I'm wrong. Thank you very much. Thank you, and it's Mr. Peroni.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's quite all right. Attorney me, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me during this section, because I wanna, there've been a number of comments related to how much money the developer's gonna make and, you know, what it's gonna cost to build it and how they're gonna, you know, fly off into heavens with, you know, money flying everywhere. Part of the comprehensive permit requirements limits a developer to the amount of profits they can make. And if they make over that amount of money, that money gets paid to the city of Newburyport. And they are, this is a rental project, and they will be audited every year to confirm that they are not making in excess of that amount of money. And so I just wanted to make that clear, that this is not a forty R project, which has no income limitations on it. This is a forty B project, which has very strict limitations on profit over development costs.
Thank you, Attorney Me. Continuing in the room for public comments. And I want to thank everyone as we continue, not to suggest we're ending, but I want to thank everyone who's spoken thus far or spoken more than once. Is there any further comments in the room? Yes.
I, I think perhaps it might be helpful, maybe, I know it's nine fifty-five, but I think a lot of people here that are talking about density didn't have the advantage of the question that I asked at the last hearing. It might be helpful to clarify that this is a friendly forty B, there's already development that's been made in place, that the ability of the DBA to, we've got this permit is riveted. And it might just be helpful to set that context where it's appropriate to do that. If the two hundred and twelve units is pretty much a fixed number based on what has been negotiated.
Thank you, that's an excellent point, and I am, yes, Mr. Swanton, one of us should address that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that one of the most common things that people have said is it's too big. And I think better to have our attorney say what our ability is here to make it smaller, because we are quite limited. So perhaps, if you could address this, you could do it better than I. Please address the question, everybody's saying that, isn't it way too big? Do something about it, but what can we do?
So, it's complicated, and I mentioned earlier about one of the things, this project, it gets approved because you reached a ten percent. And that gets you out of the rules that are applying here. The rules that apply here are this developer goes to a state agency, pro forma that was proppet, and number of units, and that state agency approves that, then comes to the board. And the board's ability to decrease the number of units is very limited. It's, it's, if it tries to decrease the number of units, it's making the project uneconomic. And then it really has to improve a, a very high, you know, public health issue or something. Otherwise, there's really no way of getting some of the maintenance. If the city does get past that ten percent, then there will not be other forty B projects, and all the great ones over there will be bad. I don't know if that, but we have a question.
If I can dovetail on that, and I appreciate Attorney Horstman. When it comes to forty B, it is true that we as comprehensive permitting body stand in the shoes of every boarding commission of our fine city, whether it be conservation, planning, historic. We deal with as a permitting body in areas that are, that are centric and specific to subject matter that this board never, ever deals with, ever. As the zoning board of appeals, we find ourselves saddled with the responsibility, the duty to deal with and spoil in subject matter that requires us as a board to seek the professional guidance of peer review experts, which is why the statute by our, you know, our, the men and women that make up our general court in Boston, our legislature, have set out the calculus and pro forma of forty B by which we have to hold ourselves accountable. We are entitled to require and align the applicant to, to pay for these experts to allow us as a board, working outside of our silos of expertise, to at least aspire to have the expertise through the experts of others. That's why we enlist the expertise both under the roof at City Hall, our, our department chairs, like our city engineer, our conservation agent, or our conservation department, our planning department, as well as our building committee, like Mr. Earl sitting in the room. And then beyond the four, the four walls of our city hall, you specify experts like our traffic and parking engineers who counsel us to be able to guide our review of expertise that is being put before us by the applicant. That is why T E C, our parking and traffic engineer, helps us understand the, the, the information that's being provided by Venice, so that we have a hope of understanding it as, as laypeople. Aspiring to be experts in an area where we really don't bear that, that organic expertise. But in this context, there are things we can do and things we cannot do. And it's important to sort of speak to the, dare I say, the elephant in the room. We will hear you with empathy, as is, you know, our role, but also a, as is our duty as fellow human beings in work. We are residents just like you, we sit at these tables as appointed volunteers. And so we have duty in that respect, and we understand that. But as we go through this, it's important to understand that what we cannot do is, is upturn the, the, the pro forma that's in place under forty B. And specifically that is the density, which has already been determined. We do have the power as a city, under forty, to attempt to guide and refine and finesse a project. But we are limited in our ability to do so, as is any zoning board of appeals in any city with, or talented in the Commonwealth. We must not and may not trip the wire that Attorney Horstman has described as the uneconomically viable. That's a soft standard, what does that mean? Well, men and women who wear black robes will determine what that means, but not first before they go before our state's housing appeals committee, referred to as HAP, though they don't like that acronym, I'm sure. But, but the applicant, and this is not speaking out of school, this is speaking in school, because it's important for all of us to understand. As we sit at these tables, we will, we listen to this expertise, and we attempt to refine it, and we attempt to digest it, as do all of you. But it's important, though, we will hear you and hear from you and continue to do so. It's important to know that we do not have the power to say no out of, out of pocket. We simply cannot do that. That will trigger, if we say no, that's a hard no, which means that an applicant would say, well, a no is uneconomically viable. And they will have the ability to appeal, and if they do so, we as a city are held accountable to a standard that is not Newburyport-centric, does not necessarily care for, or have empathy for our sense and sensibility of massing and architectural heritage and things of that nature that are important to us, but rather is brought by a pro forma standard that is Commonwealth law. It includes the standards in Chinatown Mass and Orange Mass, and in southeastern Massachusetts, and the Cape of the Islands, and everywhere and anywhere in between, but it is not Newburyport-specific. So we as a board are, are, are privileged and saddled at the same time with the opportunity to go through this in an attempt to make it better, but we must do so within the guardrails of forty B. So I think it's important for us to say that out loud. I know there has not necessarily been perhaps said this way, so I appreciate the opportunity. I'm not sure who had asked us to do so, Mr. Peroni, I guess, and Mary. I thank anyone, and I thank all of you for, for this, but it's important for us to continue to do this work with that in mind. So, we will attempt to continue our review of all of this, and I want to make sure that we continue our open public comment before we close, I know that we're rounding ten P M. So with that, forgive, and forgive the indulgence, but I think it's important that we, we speak this truth, right? So that we understand what it is we're dealing with, what it is we're up against, what we may do, what we can do, and what we cannot do.
Hey, Andrew, this is David Gamble, can I jump in?
Please, I'm sorry. As clear as you are, you're
Hang on one second.
This board and this city cannot refuse to build, have the build, have the developers build this project. Am I hearing this correctly?
We can say no. Then the applicants would have an appeal to Boston, yes.
But basically, you're saying, I, I think, in, in common language, you're saying you really can't refuse this project.
Could I, could I please, sorry, could I?
I just want to be clear, that's all.
If I could just, just, like you're just a common guess, like again, it is a strong, unfortunately, unfortunate tip for the labor since that our language regulation links their end line, the Commonwealth is so complicated and convoluted, right? But they are what they are, and as the chair and attorney for pointing out, this is a state statute. So this, this, the ability of this board to say no based on size, scale, number of units and so forth is greatly diminished. So yes, if the board were to say, yes, we're going to deny this thing, it places a lot of burden on this board to defend that decision when it goes to how we deal with the state. That is not likely to be upheld in a situation like this in the context. So that's why we're starting here with something where this sort of premises, the city is expected to look and see the need of affordable housing in the Commonwealth, and they take that statewide prioritization. And that is why the applicant is able to come here, and it's actually the, there is a development agreement in place, but the applicant is essentially entitled to come in for this permit process under the state statute. So there is unfortunately two misconceptions that unfortunately it's understandable completely why the public might have it. This board does not control the affordability of the rates in there, we got our essential in our housing trust, about the eighty percent, whether we think that's affordable, we could have our own discussion about it, but we don't control the state formula or that. If that changes, that changes, but that's the framework we're working in. And the same thing goes with the scale. So unfortunately, even though we might all care about size and scale and think about it being a little bit, you know, different than the scale of my effect in different areas in Newburyport, it's not unfortunately a strong factor that this board can apply here in the overall context. The best I can explain it without saying, you know, definitively yes, no, it's
I want to allow our city solicitor just to round this out.
Just say one final thing, and I promise this is it. I think there is ninety-nine percent of the people in this city and any city do not know what you just said. That this board cannot, I think the average person, I'm pretty average, I think most people in the room are pretty average. They have no understanding of what you just said. I think you should put it in every article, no matter what you say, Mister or Misses Citizen, we cannot stop this project. I don't know anybody that knows that, other than learning it tonight. I, and I'm not even being critical, I'm just being very honest. Nobody knows that, I live in a complex, maybe four units, it's a beautiful complex, we love it, all, all good stuff. I'll bet there's not one person in there that doesn't think that you, or the city council, or the mayor, or the pope can stop it. No one knows what you just said. I think it's unfair. I think most people that are here tonight that were making comments were hoping that you listened, and if they were significant comments that would help stop the project, I said significant, not just off the wall stuff, that you had that ability. There's no one that I know that knows you, you don't have the ability to stop the project. I think that's totally unfair to the citizens. Thank you very much for all your work, and I mean that sincerely, and thank you for making me speak. But this is a shocker to me.
I, I, I will just end with this, and I respect that, Mr. Peroni. These are the, this is a statute from our, the general court. So I will say that I agree with you, you are likely correct. There are many, based on just my living in the world, as one voting member here. There are many folks, I'm sure, that do not fully understand the, the architecture of forty B when it comes to affordable housing throughout the Commonwealth, not just in Newburyport. Yet nonetheless, here we are, and we must do our work. And when I say that we listen with empathy, I'll speak as just myself, I'm listening to every single comment. I will bring to bear every single comment with empathy and, and focus to try to do what is within what I believe to be the purview of my powers, one voting member, and I suspect my colleagues share that sentiment. It is nonetheless where we are, though this work continues and we continue in it. Within the guardrails that are, that the men and women that have been elected to our general court have given us through the forty B statute, that's where we are, and I, and I do respect everyone's comment.
I'm totally shocked, but I am totally shocked that you people of the city, et cetera, et cetera, do not have the ability to stop the project. I am totally shocked, and you said many people don't understand, I'd like to repeat what I said. I'll guarantee ninety-nine percent of the people in this city, people that are average, knowledgeable people, have no idea that you cannot stop the project, and that. Thank you very much, I appreciate all your time.
Any questions? If I may, sir, I'm gonna let our council speak, and then we'll continue.
This statute has been invented, as you said, to be controversial for all the reasons that you, you decided. The one thing that you want everyone to understand, these rules that can screen zoning board only exist while this town has less than ten percent of its housing under the subsidized housing industry. If this project is approved, the town will have, or the city potentially, will have more than a ten percent. And the board would then, in future projects like this, have the ability to table. It's a good screening effort, Commonwealth has every municipality, and I believe ten percent of boards will have it. And if they hit that goal, then they get three of these constraints. Until they do that, they are subject to the constraints for top of the ballot. And so there's a project with that game, and you will not be dealing with this in other areas where
In the context of law, does this sport have the authority? In the context of the legal requirements, does this sport have the authority to say to the developer, yes, we accept through a project, but on the basis that it be in a different location?
For example?
No.
We're lost in weight again, in that general area. Second question. If another developer approached the city with a proposal with the same problem, would the board have to consider a second proposal that would result in accepting one, but and rejecting another?
Well, that gets very complicated, on a timing issue, because there are these certain rules that's when, when that ten percent is calculated. And, and it's only an issue committed for so close to that ten percent. So, if this gets approved, there's basically a one-year period until they get their building period, building permits that the board wouldn't have to consider any other projects, and could just say no. Okay, if for some reason this project's solved, and they get the building purpose, then you'd be back into, you'd have a ninety, ten percent, you'd have to consider other projects like that, like this.
I'm going to continue with public comment, and sir, I believe you've been very patient, so I want to give you a floor.
I think it's commendable that you guys, the zoning board, the developer, and the owners are working together. This is, I think, what they call a friendly body B. Because I'm gonna use simple terms here, no offense, guys, but you tend to overdo it sometimes. When this stops When this stops being a friendly body B and becomes an adversarial body B, what happens? In a thousand words or less, please.
Oh, your name, sir?
Uh, yeah, I'm Roy.
Thank you. This is just for our note table.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That works a lot. If it's not a friendly forty B, but you end up with the, with a board decision that the applicant takes to a state agency, uh, the housing appeals committee, that hears the case under laws and rules that generally favor the developer, and put a very heavy burden on the municipality to come up with a, a truly, you know, remarkable reason for why it's denied a project. If it's just a question of economics, then, you know, if you approve the project and the applicant takes issue with some of the conditions, then it's the outset for that burden of proving that you've made the project uneconomic, and if you can do that, then the board has to come up with that sort of really high standard as to why you'd be conditioning it. So it's, if you're either way, it's either way.
But if it becomes adversarial, the developer doesn't, kind of has the ability to throw zoning regulations to the wind and do basically what they would like to do. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, they, they were ready, they were ready, they were ready asked for zoning variances or, or waivers, which they don't do under this statute, right? So if, let, let's break it simple. If it's adversarial and it's a denial, the standard that the board needs to uphold the denial is extremely, extremely high, and I can't pick a case on top, I can't let that actually work.
And so what you guys are doing here now, what these people are doing here now, is commendable. And it's to the benefit of the city of Newburyport to work something out here. Because this development is not going away. It's not going to get smaller. It is not going to be done somewhere else. And so it's in the city's best interest for the city to work with the developer, but not with the most equitable solution that's possible. Life ain't Burger King. You can't always have it your way.
Thanks, sir. Further comments in the room, and, uh, thank you all for the indulgence of that commentary and that discussion. I think it's important for us all. Um, further, uh, Mr. Agar.
Yeah, I just want to make a clarification in response to a comment that Mary made. So we're using the term friendly forty B. That, there's no such term in the law. It's just a shorthand saying that we're trying to work it out. You know, there, there's no such, it's not in the ranks, because there's no friendly forty B. Also, the development agreement that the mayor signed does not bind this board. We don't have to approve because of the development agreement. So I don't want, I don't want anyone to misunderstand that. We're making an independent determination. That's why we're doing all this work. That's why we're having all these hearings. We didn't just take in the application as described in the development agreement with our mayor and say, okay, well, the mayor wants it, go ahead. You know, I want to make that clear. Thank you.
Very good.
Chair, I just wanted to know, um, David Gamble, that he designed peer review consultant, had read, wanted to say something. I'm not sure if you're still interested, but, uh, just wanted to know that.
That's our peer.
Peer reviewer.
Um, actually, Attorney Mead, I want to, very, very brief, and then I want to hear, we, we haven't heard from our, uh, design peer.
So the, the term friendly forty B is actually short for a LIP, which is a local initiative project. And it's deemed a friendly forty B because it's submitted and signed by the city in cooperation with the developer and submitted to approval from E O H L C as opposed to an unfriendly forty B, which goes directly to M H F A without any input from the city. And that's why it's called a friendly forty B. So it's a LIP project, a local initiative project.
And Attorney Mead, just could you define the acronym just for the.
So local initiative project, and E O H L C is the executive office of Liverpool Housing Initiative.
Okay, um, thank you, Attorney Mead. I, uh, we have, uh, online Mr. David Gamble, who is our peer review consultants, uh, for design review. Uh, Mr. Gamble, thank you for your patience. Can you hear us? And if so, can you unmute your mic? And we, uh, we, uh, we would like to hear from you, and thank you.
Thank you. Can you, I can hear you well. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, great. Well, look, I don't want to have the last word. I know it's almost, you know, ten twenty, but, um, there was a comment made earlier that Newburyport is a victim of its own success, and you know, it's almost undeniable that your downtown is, uh, is looked at with a great deal of envy, not just in the Commonwealth, but across the country. It's, it's a remarkable place, and you've, you've done well to preserve it. It, it's walkable, it's dense, uh, two, three, four stories, it's mixed use. It's made out of natural materials, you know, a lot of brick. Uh, there are view corridors and pocket parks, and when you look at the downtown in the context of Plaza Landings, that place has none of that. It's almost entirely single use. It is, as many people have said, entirely vehicle oriented. It's hard to get around if you're not in a car, and even when you are, it's hard. Uh, it's almost entirely impervious surfaces. Yes, there's been landscape improvements, but uh, compared to, let's say, a, a more naturalized landscape, it's all runoff. And, uh, it's mostly single story. So, look, I, I, we work mostly with cities. Uh, I teach urban design at MIT. I've written a book about rebuilding American cities and towns. I can assure you that this project will begin to transform a site that really, really needs it. It needs a mix of uses. It needs people living there. It needs, uh, some more green space. Uh, and, and not only has the developer, the applicant been interested in these things, but he's been eager to make them happen. So from a design standpoint, do I think it's too big? No. Do I think that this area is going to continue to change over the next generation? Absolutely. And what if, my biggest criticism, and it's not something the board can control, is that the site is looked at in a little bit too much isolation. And these conversations about connectivity and open space and resiliency and tree canopy would be more productive if one could place this property in the context of the rest of Plaza Landings so that it could be looked at comprehensively. Uh, but again, that's not something that this board or even the applicant control because they're looking at one site. So I feel they've made, uh, 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 attempts at addressing issues of scale. The vast majority of parking is hidden. If you make this building smaller, it'll actually make it more difficult to put parking below grade because you will, you can't afford it. So there's a logic, not just a regulatory logic, but there's a, a design logic to making it fairly big, but put in some courtyards, break up the massing, have setbacks and step backs, and I honestly think they've done a fairly good job at that. So whether or not that adds assurances to a butters, I doubt it. But I can, I can say that from an urban design and architecture standpoint, they're doing the best they can with what they have.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. All right, um, ladies and gentlemen, I, I think that, uh, I'm gonna hand the room one more time. If there's any further comments, I wish to hear them. Uh, we wish to hear them. If not, uh, I will thank you for your public comment, your indulgence and your patience, uh, but mostly your comments. Um, it is important, an important part of our work. Um, it's almost, uh, ten twenty. Um, so I want to bring it back to, uh, Attorney Mead, was there anything further from the applicant for this evening?
Uh, no, just a continuation date.
Okay, um. Is there anything further from the board before we undertake a settlement? Very good. Um, do we have a date for continuation?
So your next meeting is November twenty-fifth.
Is that.
Do we know how much, what's on that?
Oh, well, it's full.
It's full.
That's full. So we have to go to the next day.
Your first meeting in, um, December, December ninth.
December ninth, okay. December ninth, then, uh, do we have a motion to continue? Thank you, Mr. Agar. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Motion's made and seconded calling the roll on the continuation of forty B, um, comprehensive permit project to December ninth. Uh, Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Dela?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Agar? Yes, and I vote yes. That is six in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion, five in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Uh, do we have a, uh, we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, yes. Uh, we're gonna move to, um, minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, for those of you who are packing up, I want to say again, thank you for coming out this evening, and, uh, we will be back at this work on December ninth. So, uh, we hope, December ninth, so we'll hopefully join us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so we'll close the, um, public hearings and go into, um, our business meeting, which will be the adoption and approval of the minutes. Do we have any comments on the minutes?
Uh, there's just one typo, the, the architects. Gamble, like Oscar Gamble.
I'm seven. What was, um, Mr. Kaplan?
Well, I'm sorry, but we, we, if you don't mind, thank you, just thank you very much.
Do we have, um, comments on the minutes? You're upset, okay. Um, any other comments? The emotional improvement square.
So moved.
Thank you. And seconded, this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Impose no votes, extension, the ayes have it. Motion carries, minutes are approved. Thank you. We have any, uh, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, all those in favor.
Aye.
No, no abstentions, no no votes. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much.